Good evening. We will bring this August 4th, 6 o'clock, Fate City Council meeting to order. Madam Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we do.
Excellent. What's the next item on our agenda, please?
Next will be Agenda Item 2, which is invocation. It will be given by Stephen Downs, Assistant City Manager, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American and Texas Flags.
Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful to gather together today as a community to come together to share our opinions and views and seek your will and what's best for this community as we continue to strive to be a community that's safe and a good place for our families to be raised and for people to come and grow in many different ways. We're so grateful for this community that we get to call home and the wonderful place that it is for all those that work diligently day by day, specifically our first responders and our public works employees that are out on the streets day and night protecting our way of life and providing essential services. Please bless our city council as they hear the proposals and thoughts of citizens and those that are looking to relocate or do business in our community, that they'll be inspired as to what's the best thing for this community moving forward. Help us to continue to be good stewards of it. Help us to prepare a place that our kids and our grandkids can call home in the future. We ask for these things. Do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, the next agenda item, please.
Okay. Next will be Agenda Item 3A, which is Fate Public Facility Corporation Call to Order and Confirm a Quorum.
All right, and do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we do.
Excellent. Okay, so next item, please.
Next will be Agenda Item 3B, which is Consider Approval of Minutes of the Fate Public Facility Corporation Meeting Held September 19th, 2022.
Okay, so some time ago, but do I have discussion on this?
Will we approve the minutes?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay.
This will be a hand vote. I'm so sorry.
Okay, no, that's okay.
Since it's a joint meeting.
Yes, absolutely. All right, so all those in favor of approving the minutes of the Fate Public Facility Corporation Meeting Held September 19th, 2022, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, please raise your hand if you say no. All right, motion passes. The approval of the minutes passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Next will be Agenda Item 3C, which is Discuss, Consider, and Take Necessary Action Regarding Electing the Following Officers of the Fate Public Facility Corporation Board of Directors, President and Vice President.
Okay, so discussion on this item? Mr. Kelly?
I'll nominate Mark Harper as President of the PFC.
Okay, so are we going to do this one office at a time?
Yeah, you'll start with President.
So we'll start with the President here. Okay. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Andrew Greenberg.
Okay.
For President.
Thank you. Any other nominations?
I nominate Mark Hatley.
All right. Okay, any others? We're going to go for all seven of us? Okay, so let's now...
We'll vote in alphabetical order.
Okay.
So the first, this is the order we'll vote in. I'm sorry. Yes, so, I'm sorry. Yeah. Greenberg, Harper, and Hatley. That's the order that we will vote on.
Okay. Do we, do any of the candidates that have been nominated wish to speak on this?
We only get one vote per person, correct?
That is correct.
Just checking.
Okay, so let's begin voting.
Okay, first we'll vote for Andrew Greenberg. Please, it'll be a raise your hand vote. Zero? Oh, one, excuse me.
Okay, got one down there.
Okay, next we'll move to Mark Harper. One, two, three, four. Okay, and next we'll move to Mark Hatley. Two. Okay, so Mark Harper secured the nomination.
Okay, so now we'll open up the floor for nominations for Vice President.
I'll nominate Cody Chin.
All right. Cody, want to say a few words about what you look forward to bringing to the... Okay, any other, any other nominations?
I'll nominate Mark Hatley.
Okay. All right, any others?
I would like to nominate Martha Huffman.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, so we'll close the, close the floor for nominations. Okay, so how, what will the order be for our votes?
The order, you will vote for Chin, Hatley, and Huffman, in that order.
Okay.
Okay, so votes for Cody Chin, please raise your hand. Three. Okay, and then for votes for Mark Hatley, please raise your hand. Three. Okay, and then for votes for Martha Huffman, one. Okay, we'll have a revote between Cody Chin and Mark Hatley. So all those that would like to vote for Cody Chin, please raise your hand. Four. Okay, and then for Mark Hatley, please raise your hand. Three. Okay, Cody Chin has secured the nomination.
Okay. Congratulations to you two.
And then if we could just have a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to nominate Mark Harper as President of the PFC and Cody Chin as Vice President of the PFC.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, and this will be hand as well.
Correct.
Okay, just making sure. All right, all those in favor of this motion, please indicate by raising your hand.
Okay.
Okay, those opposed? Okay, passes seven to zero. Thank you.
Okay, and then next will be Agenda Item 3D, which is Adjournment of the PFC Meeting.
I move adjourn the PFC.
Okay. Do I have a second to adjourn?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjourning the Fate Public Facility Corporation Meeting, please indicate by raising your hand.
Great.
Okay, those opposed? All right, passes seven to zero. We are adjourned from the Fate Public Facility Corporation Meeting.
Great.
All right, we done? All right, next item, please.
Okay, next will be Agenda Item 4A, which is Texas Music Office Music Friendly Community Certification Presentation.
Good evening.
Mayor and Council, back in February, council approved a memorandum of understanding with the Texas Music Office in our pursuit of a Texas-friendly, music-friendly designation. We have achieved that today, and so we have Jenny from the Texas Music Office, who will have a lot more words for you here, but why is this important to economic development? Because it generates more than $26 billion in annual economic activity in the state of Texas, and so that's why economic development is here. We also have several members of the artists from Fate that are here to celebrate with us today, and so Jenny is going to make a quick, a few remarks, and then we'll have a quick photo opportunity, if y'all don't mind.
Hi.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Doing very well.
Excellent. Hey, it's really great to be here in Fate. My name is Jeannie Moscoro. I am the Community Relations and Outreach Specialist for the Texas Music Office, and we are part of the Economic Development and Tourism Office under the direction of Governor Greg Abbott. And it's really great to be here with you tonight as we celebrate Fate's designation as a music-friendly community. The Texas Music Office, we have now been around for 35 years. We are the first and longest-running state music office in the country, and we are setting the bar. For 35 years now, we have been champions of the economic development of music-related businesses and communities here within Texas. And first of all, I would like to thank Yvonne Rain. She is the City of Fate's Economic Community Development Specialist. Yvonne, thank you. She's the one who set this process in motion. Also, yeah, thank you so much. Thank you also, Mayor Greenberg, and thank you also to the Economic Development Director, Matt Waverin. Also, thank you to the Fate City Council members and Fate's Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee. Now, the Fate's Music Friendly Community Advisory Board is a testament to how you know the power of music can enhance not only the quality of life for the citizens in your city, but also spur positive economic impact. Now, with support from the Texas Music Office, the Texas music industry accounts for 196,000 permanent jobs here in the state, and it also generates over $31 billion in annual economic activity right around the state. Fate is now set to play an active role in that. So tonight, the Texas Music Office, in partnership with the City of Fate, we are very proud to recognize Fate as our newest certified music-friendly Texas community. So your designation, Fate's designation celebrates Fate's dedication to promoting Fate's musical artistry and industry and the potential economic impact and opportunities that stem from your efforts. So on behalf of the Texas Music Office and the Governor, congratulations to Fate. You are now certified music-friendly. It's great to have you onboard. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, what's our next item, please?
Next is Agenda Item 5, which is Public Comment. I've received one request to address the council, that being from Allen Robbins, Address 309 Amos Court, which is, wishes to speak on the 2025-2026 budget.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Robbins.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Allen Robbins, 309 Amos Court, Fate, Texas. There was an idea floated last, last budget meeting about what we should do with the surplus and possibly buying down the M&amp;O rate for next year. That is incredibly reckless and ill-advised. It's like getting a bonus to make a down payment on a car that you have to have more bonuses in order to afford. There's no guarantee that our permit revenue is going to keep going up or we're going to keep getting it. Couple of years ago, we ran into a deficit and had to turn off some fund transfers to make ends meet. Surplus revenue should be used for one-time expenses, buying down of interfund debt, capital purchases. Every dollar spent on infrastructure extends the life of that infrastructure exponentially. So anything, anything other than that with surplus money isn't very fiscally conservative as far as budget goes for cities. Appreciate your time, and please do not buy down the M&amp;O rate with the surplus. It's dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next will be Agenda Item 6, which is the Consent Agenda.
Make a motion. We approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next item, please.
Okay, next will be Agenda Item 7A. This is an application for a specific use permit to allow for a landscape contractors and supply business on North Star Road. First will be your staff summary, followed by applicant presentation, and then the public hearing, and ultimately action on ordinance number 02025-024.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ryan Wells, Director of Planning and Development Services. So tonight I'll be giving a brief presentation on a specific use permit request for Wiley Decorative Rocks and More. The project ID before you tonight is SUP 25001. So this is a little bit of a unique SUP request. Has a little bit of a backstory to it. The request tonight is to authorize the operation of a landscape contractors and supply business on a 2.52-acre piece of property on North Star Road. This actually initiated, was initiated following a zoning violation letter that I wrote and delivered to the property owner in April of this year. that I wrote and delivered to the property owner in April of this year. The subject property is zone agriculture, as are most properties up there on the north side of town. Per our Unified Development Ordinance, or UDO, in the agricultural zone, a tree nursery is a permitted use. The property owner came to our office a number of years ago, I think it might have been 2022, and said, hey, I want to establish a tree nursery on my property, can I do that? We looked at the code, verified that it was allowed use, and we said, yes, absolutely, go ahead, you're able to do that. Over the years, however, that initial tree nursery started to evolve a little bit and started to become more of a landscaping materials supply and tree nursery operation. And we started to observe that kind of evolution, and at the point where we started to see some concrete mixers out there for rent, we thought that was a little bit of a, too far of an evolution or migration from the initial allowed-use category. So in April, we prepared the zoning violation letter, and within the letter, we spelled out what the violation was, and we gave the property owner two options to resolve it. One was to revert the property, to just go back to a tree nursery and nothing else, or they could apply for a specific use permit for what at the time was an unlisted use in our Unified Development Ordinance. So in the UDO, Section 4.14 grants the director, myself, authority to classify unlisted uses in the code. So this specific type of use is not in the code, it's not identified. And so there's a process by which I identify what zones are appropriate and what development standards and operational standards are allowed within those zones. So after identifying this unlisted use in an internal memo, we provided this option for a specific use permit for the applicant to pursue in order to basically legitimize the expansion of the use of that property beyond just a tree nursery. So here's an aerial image of the property in question. Again, it's on North Star Road. It's a single lot, 2.52 acres in size, zone agriculture, and it's on approximately 560 feet south of the intersection of North Star and County Line Road. So a specific use permit is essentially a zoning approval. However, it's for uses that are generally compatible with the zoning district but might have some other considerations or other impacts that are worth considering. So there are approval criteria in the Unified Development Ordinance that, of course, staff evaluate when making their recommendation. So briefly, criteria on A is that the project meets the purpose of the zoning district in which it will be located. Again, the base zone of the property is agriculture. And the purpose of the agricultural zone is to accommodate agricultural uses on large acreage, and the district provisions allow for compatible agricultural uses in keeping with rural character of residential neighborhoods. Again, this landscape contractor and supply use is an unlisted use, so it's not really currently vetted for the agricultural district. But my determination was that the use would be compatible with the ag district with a specific use permit requirement and additional conditions. Criteria B and E are somewhat similar from the code, so we lumped those together. That is that the project complements or is compatible with surrounding uses, and it's in scale with the existing neighborhood. If you go up on North Star Road, you will observe multiple home-based businesses and construction-related uses, many of those having been grandfathered into the city from before the properties were annexed into FATE. There's a dump truck business up there, there are other construction-related businesses. These are folks who are making a career and making a living operating out of their homes, or at least having their homes be the home base. And of course, we respect that, and we want to allow the continued operation of those businesses as long as they don't create undue impact to the neighborhood. So because of that, and because of the fact that the subject property is absolutely, almost 100% covered with utility line easements, thereby making basically no other uses really viable on there, we felt that the landscape contractors and supply business would be a compatible use for the location. Criteria C and F, again, somewhat similar. C is that the project adequately mitigates traffic impacts, and F, that it mitigates adverse impacts due to access, parking, service areas, and traffic on adjoining properties and the street network in general. The conditions of approval recommended to you tonight by the Planning and Zoning Commission do provide some site improvements that would mitigate those impacts, and we anticipate relatively limited traffic based on the proposed use. And criteria on D is that the project contributes to enhances and promotes the quality of life for residents of the development and adjacent properties. Frankly, this provides a commercial service not currently available in FATE. It's a productive use of otherwise very limited land because of those easements. And we recommend impact mitigations in those conditions of approval that we feel would be adequate to limit the impacts to the neighboring properties and the neighborhood in general. Specific use permits are publicly noticed, so in addition to publishing the notice in the newspaper, we sent a notice to all properties within 200 feet of the subject property, as shown in the map before you. That resulted in 13 mailed notices being sent, and as of today, we received zero responses from any of those property owners or from the public in general regarding this specific use permit. While we normally conduct a fiscal analysis for any zoning-related applications, we didn't conduct one in this case because it's a single use, and we didn't have any financial data available for it. So we didn't want to make too many assumptions and make that fiscal analysis really not very valid or very helpful. So we were unable to evaluate just this specific project productivity. However, in general, we expect that a wider variety of products being available from this commercial use would result in higher taxable sales overall because of the wider customer base that it would draw. The Planning and Zoning Commission last month did hear this case and unanimously recommended approval with conditions. The conditions are as follows. Number one is that a decomposed granite or similar compact gravel material will be shown in a site plan to create internal drive aisles throughout the site. Number two is that a designated location for delivery and pickup of material will be shown on a site plan. That area shall be concrete. Condition three would be that a label, they would be required to label a designated location for vehicles like at forklifts to be stored. They shall be parked in an orderly fashion in a designated location. Condition four would be that within 120 days, they would have to provide a notarized documentation from the power company that is, controls those easements, that they have granted approval for a metal shed to be located within the power easement. So in order to provide a office location of sorts, while they can't put a permanent structure within an easement, they do have a small building that's on wheels, that's movable, and we, again, gave them verbal authorization to put that in place some time ago. It got moved into the easement area, and so we would just need approval from the power company for that to be maintained there. Condition five is that within 120 days, screening shall be provided along North Star Road and along the northern property boundary. That shall extend the length of the proposed material storage locations. Prior to acceptance of any structural permits, a Type 1 site plan application shall be submitted and approved by the city. The reason that we're only requiring screening on the north side is that that's where they're showing bulk materials being stored. On the south side is their tree nursery area, and generally, that provides enough screening in and of itself for any impacts to neighboring properties. And finally, number six, the site plan submitted in operation of the site needs to conform to the provisions and restrictions listed in the March 23, 2023 Transmission Line Easement Encroachment Agreement, which is included in your packet as Exhibit 4. So those are the six recommended conditions of approval for this specific use permit. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here. As with the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they didn't have a presentation, but they're available to answer any questions that you may have. And I'm able to take any questions now or later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I have one. All right, so it's supposed to be a tree, it could be by, right, a tree farm, right?
Yes, sir. A tree nursery. They can't actually have them in the ground.
Okay.
But they can be in pots.
So, and at some point, they put rocks? And then we said, when we saw cement mixers, that's enough. So by giving them an SUP, where does that stop going for, like, if they add more stuff?
Sure. So there are a couple safeguards, if you will. In the August 2 internal memo that identifies landscape contractors and supply as a use that's compatible with ag and general commercial zones with an SUP, there's a definition of what activities are actually allowed in there, and that's actually in your packet, it spells all that out. And then, secondly, in those conditions of approval, they require a site plan to be submitted, as with just by any commercial use. Then that basically legitimizes the operations on the site. It also establishes the location of the various material storage. And that'll be what they're confined to, is where they're going to have the bulk storage, where they're going to have the trees. So they can't just keep adding and adding and adding. There'll be a definition of where the outside storage is going to be located and where it's going to be prohibited.
Okay, thank you.
Is this a retail business or strictly for contractors, did you say?
You can let the applicant, I mean, I think anybody from the public would be able to go by bulk soil or landscape. So I'd say it's retail. Even if it were just for contractors, I think that would still remain in that retail category. But I'm pretty sure that members of the public would be able to go there. But they can specify that for you.
Okay.
I was just wondering, are they a significant employer, other than the owners?
It's a family-owned company. I don't know how many employees they have, so they can answer that question if you'd like.
Is the City of FATE collecting any tax dollars revenue from this business that's being operated?
I don't have that information. I didn't look into our sales tax software to see if that were the case. If this is taxable sales generally, so we would or will be. I believe that we probably have been, but again, I don't want to tell you definitely one way or the other.
Okay.
Other comments? Okay. Thank you.
Very good.
Our next item, do we have an applicant presentation? Okay.
Would you like to answer questions, sir?
Yes.
Go ahead.
How you doing on Vidal? So I'm an operating manager there, and he's my father-in-law, the owner. And basically, it's just him, me, my mother-in-law, and his son. Once in a while, comes and helps out, and we sell right now a lot of bulk to contractors and stuff like that. We haven't really sold to anybody from the, like, public, because, you know, we're kind of like in a location, a dead end. But I mean, that is the plan, we would like to do that. And to any of the things that we need to do to change the yard as far as, you know, parking lot, making a concrete path for loading and unloading the commercial vehicles, we're willing to do anything. And, you know, we want to stay in business, and we want to stay here in FATE. So hopefully, you know, you guys approve us, and we would like to work here in this community.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Okay, if you would like to open the public hearing for me?
Okay, yes, we'll now open the public hearing at 6:29.
I've received no requests for anybody to speak on this item.
Okay. We will close the public hearing at 6:29. So, next item, please.
Make a motion, we approve case number SUP-25-001 with staff conditions.
I'll second.
Okay, it's, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, let's vote. Okay, motion passes seven to zero, thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Next will be Agenda Item 7B, which is discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding appointing members to the Capital Impact Advisory Committee, also known as the CIAC. The order of events will be accept nominations, vote on the nominations in alphabetical order, and then ultimately, take action on the resolution appointing those members that secure the nominations to CIAC. So to give a brief overview, the reason that we are needing to restructure CIAC is because Senate Bill 1883 made changes that actually prohibits us from being able to use our Planning and Zoning Commission as the CIAC, and then also requires 50% of the CIAC members to be industry representatives. So by industry representatives, I mean representatives of the real estate market, building industries, or development. And so we accepted applications for two weeks, and we received seven applications. All of the applicants qualified to serve as a citizen rep, and then six of the seven applicants qualify as building industry reps. We've presented a resolution before you to appoint five members to the board with staggered terms, so some would be appointed for two-year terms, and some would be appointed for one-year terms.
Okay. So I guess now we'll open up the floor for nominations.
And I would recommend that you nominate for those two-year terms first.
Okay.
Do your nominations for the two-year, the three-two-year members, and then we can do nominations for the one-year members. That'll just make it cleaner and easier.
Okay, so say that one more time. We're nominating right now for the two-year.
For the three-two-year terms.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so let's, well, this is for three members that will serve two-year terms. We'll start accepting nominations.
I'd like to nominate George Indiqua, and I apologize if I messed that last name up, and Imma Jean Smith.
Okay.
And I'd like to nominate Steve Dan and Gina Talkington.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Samu Hussein.
Okay. Mr. Manville, any nominations? Mr. Hatley? Huffman, good? Okay, so one, two, three, four, five nominations that we received, and we will vote on three of them.
You received five nominations? You're going to vote for three positions?
Yes.
So you each get three votes.
Okay.
And the order that we will vote will be first, Steve Dan, followed by Samu Hussein, George Dequa, I think I said that right, Imma Jean Smith, and Gina Talkington. And these will be hand votes. So we'll start with votes for Steve Dan. One, two, three, four, five votes. I showed Cody, Mark Harper, Mayor Greenberg, Scott Kelly, and Rick Manville. Oh, Mark Hatley, too, so that's six. Okay, next, we'll vote for Imma Jean Smith. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, did I do that out of order? I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. We should be voting for Samu Hussein.
So the last vote doesn't count?
That is correct. The last vote for Imma Jean Smith does not count. We should have been voting for Samu Hussein. Okay, all in favor of Samu Hussein, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. Okay. Next, we'll vote for George Dequa, which the last name starts with an. One, two. Okay, and next will be Imma Jean Smith. One, two, three, four, five. And then last will be Gina Talkington. Two. Okay. So Steve Dan, Samu Hussein, and Imma Jean Smith secured those nominations.
Okay, so they, those are three for the two-year. Now we are going to open up nominations for our one-year members.
Yes. So let me, if you would like me to mark off who remains?
Sure, that would be great.
Yes.
That would be perfect, thank you.
Okay, so remaining would be Mitchell Mulholland, George Dequa, David Overstreet, and Gina Talkington.
Okay, we'll open up for nominations.
I'd like to nominate George Dequa.
I'd like to nominate Gina Talkington.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, we'll Okay, we'll close nominations. Then this is for two. We have two of these one-year members.
There are two spots. That is correct.
Okay, so if that's, if those are the only two nominations, do we?
There's no need to vote.
Yeah, okay.
Correct.
All right. So I'm showing that we have Steve Dan, Samu Hussein, and Imma Jean Smith for the two-year terms, and then George Digu and Gina Talkington for the one-year terms.
Yes, sir, that is correct. So we would just need a motion to approve the resolution appointing those people.
I'll make a motion that we approve, that we appoint Steve Dan, Samu Hussein, and Imma Jean Smith to a three-year term to the CIAC, and George.
Two-year term.
Two-year term, I'm sorry.
Yes, you're correct.
And George Indiqua and Gina Talkington to a one-year term. CIAC.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing as there's none, let's vote, please. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, and congratulations to our new members of the Capital Impact Advisory Committee.
And just for the record, that meeting, for those that might be in the audience that were just appointed, our first meeting will be August 25th. We'll be following up with an email tomorrow.
Okay, next item, please.
Next is Agenda Item 7C. Discuss the activities and performance of the following proposed recipients of child safety fee funds. Children's Advocacy Center for Rockwall County, Lone Star CASA, Boys and Girls Club of Northeast Texas, and Women in Need Incorporated.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kovacs?
Yes, sir. So Councilmember Chin suggested, and the rest of you all agreed, at the last meeting to have the different groups and clubs come by and talk about what they do. So we've got them here tonight. So if you'd like, we could start with some presentations from the groups, and then, and I think we may have some content, specific discussion. So I think who would be, I think we have one group that did not submit, but is anyone, any preference on which one we go first?
We could just go in order that they're listed.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Omar.
Let's see.
Oh, here. I see, I see. I see. I see. I see. I see.
So nice to have the opportunity to speak to everyone and share a little bit about what we do. We're so blessed to live in a community where, when there's a need, people step up, and not just for our organization, but we serve alongside a number of different nonprofits. And if we weren't all needed, we wouldn't all be here. So the Children's Advocacy Center. Our mission is on the screen. We are the only agency of its kind in Rockwall County, and while we are a nonprofit, we are sort of an essential nonprofit. The Texas Family Code requires that cases that are referred, any children that have a disclosure, an outcry of sexual abuse, must be taken to the Closest Children's Advocacy Center. And just seven years ago, we didn't have one in our own community. So we are a non-investigative agency, so caregivers can't just bring their children to the center. They have to be referred by an investigating agency, such as one of our partners, like law enforcement or CPS, perhaps the District Attorney's Office. We're also accredited at the state level as well as nationally. We offer a safe, secure, confidential, and a child-friendly environment where we perform trauma-informed services. We serve children who've been victimized by any form of abuse, and that's a little bit different. Every CAC has different protocols, but in Rockwall County, when we were first getting started, our county and our partners made the decision that we would serve children that were victims of sexual abuse, physical abuse, witness to a violent crime, neglect, and domestic violence. We work for the prevention of child abuse by raising awareness and educating. So while we, seven years ago, when we first got started, our main charge was to get up and running and offer those direct services. Our hearts are also with prevention, so we put a lot of emphasis in the last couple of years on our prevention and education through our partnership with schools, and that also meets TEA requirements. So if you look in this picture and you look closely at the blue door, I am reminded of when we first got started. It was just short of, shy of seven years ago. We were expected to see about 10 cases a month, and we now see on average about 70 new clients a month. Those are unduplicated children. And behind that blue door, we see children receive the hope that they deserve and the healing that they need. We see that their lives are transformed. As children step across that threshold, they're met with caring professionals. While we do have a cadre of volunteers that help us with things mostly outside, our direct services are provided by staff who are highly skilled and highly trained, for obvious reasons. And so in Rockwall County, our multidisciplinary team is made up of representatives from all seven law enforcement jurisdictions, our Department of Family and Protective Services, the REACH Clinic. They are, they have child abuse pediatricians that are specialized in child abuse on staff, our Rockwall County Sexual Assault Response Team, and our Rockwall County District Attorney's Office. I mentioned earlier that children and families are referred to the center by an investigating partner. Our voice and the reason that we're there, we're kind of sit in the middle. We help keep the wheels turning, and we serve as a hub and a voice for the child, any siblings in the home, and their non-offending caregivers. Texas CACs are codified in the Texas Family Code. As I mentioned, it indicates that any child who's a victim of child sexual abuse must be taken to the nearest Children's Advocacy Center. Essentially, we're not optional, and partners are required to utilize the service as part of their investigative process. And we take great pride in serving alongside our partners in the community. And I'm really proud to be part of this movement in Texas. Sadly, I have now personal experience of a situation that was out of state, and Texas does this better than any other state. And part of it is that we are required to maintain a child-centric focus around processes and procedures, how they're designed, and really to help keep that child at the focus of what we do and minimize and reduce any revictimization. Child abuse statistics. So we know that one in seven children will experience abuse and neglect in the past year. We know that five children die every day from child abuse, and we know that one in 10 children are sexually abused before their 18th birthday. And with that, when we know better, we do better. So Texas is home to the second-largest population of children in the United States. We have 7.4 million children living in Texas. And if you think of one in 10 children being victims of sexual abuse, that equates to 740,000 kids who need help and services from a Children's Advocacy Center. Recent studies in, a study that was done in the state of Texas actually indicate that one in six high school students have been victimized by, been a victim of sexual abuse. In Rockwall County, according to 2023 census data, we have 31,234 children under the age of 18 living in our county, so one in 10 means 3,124 that we need our services. And in the City of Fayette, if we look at that same census data, there were 6,804 children under 18 years of age, meaning about 680 kids have likely been the victim of abuse, but we may not have heard from all of them. Child abuse is when an adult, whether through action or failing to act, causes injury, death, emotional harm, or risk of serious harm to a child. There are many types of child abuse, including neglect, physical abuse, sexual abuse, exploitation, and emotional abuse. Recently, our county has gone through a process of expanding our protocols to have a formal response for child sex trafficking. And when we first start, I would say one of the challenges we had when we were first getting started seven years ago was the disbelief that child abuse happens in our county. And sadly, it's happened since the beginning of time. And as we look at victims and their offenders, it really can happen to anyone. Given our seven years of data, while our national statistics say that over 90% of kids know and love their perpetrators, what we know from our Rockwall County data is that 95% of the children we've served have been victimized or abused by someone they know, love, and care about. So the types of services that we offer, while we do leverage volunteers for some of the services that we do, the direct core services are all provided by highly skilled, trained, and specially educated group of folks. You know, I think about if I were going to get my hair colored, I wouldn't want a volunteer who has an interest in doing that to touch my hair. Or if I were going to install an HVAC system, I wouldn't want a volunteer who has an interest in that kind of thing to provide those services. I would want to know that it's somebody skilled, somebody trained, somebody who knows how to deliver that work. And our, one of our standards requires that the staff stays up to date on their training, gets recertified and credentialed on a regular basis. So we offer case coordination services, and those services include the review of statewide intakes. So when there's an allegation of child abuse, there's a report that's made. That report goes to law enforcement, it goes to CPS, and it comes to the Children's Advocacy Center. And we also work with our law enforcement partners when there's not an element or concern of safety of a child in the home. Those are called information and referral resources, and they go, those go directly to law enforcement. Those are the ones where usually it's an alleged perpetrator's outside of the home. We also conduct forensic interviews, where, which are information gathering interviews conducted by specially-trained professionals. They're developmentally appropriate. So how an interviewer interviews a three-year-old versus a 16-year-old is very, very different, because to a three-year-old, everything happened yesterday. But a 16-year-old can tell you it was every day for the last whatever amount of time. They're trauma-informed, and they're designed to minimize the number of times a child must share their experiences. Without a CAC, what we knew was a child would be taken to law enforcement, then they would be taken to CPS, then maybe a medical professional, and then a mental health professional. And each time we were revictimizing the child, and they got the message that said, well, why didn't that person believe me? And why do I have to keep sharing my story over and over again? So a forensic interview helps minimize that revictimization process. We also provide family advocacy services. We help families navigate complex systems by explaining the process, crime victim rights. We help them with crime victims' compensation, how to access resources that will help their family during crisis. Life after the disclosure of abuse can be very tumultuous. We educate families and caregivers on child abuse dynamics and prevention. I think about if I were to be in caregiver shoes, I know one of the first things I would say is, how did I miss this? And so our family advocates very quickly educate a caregiver on child abuse dynamics and how it could have been very easy to miss, so that they can then become the best advocate for their child. We give information referrals to other community resources in the event that services are not appropriated at a CAC. And when needed, we can provide clothing, toiletries, and financial assistance. We have a number of different special projects that go on throughout the year, such as our back-to-school program, which just happened, we're at that season now. We have a Holiday of Hope program for Thanksgiving and Christmas. We also have a Dream Camp for, primarily targeted at teens in the summertime, and My Safe Space, where if a case and a client is appropriate, we can do room makeovers for kids and their families that really ultimately change their lives. And the feedback that we've received from caregivers has been just amazing. And then lastly, we also, well, we've got our counseling services. Our counseling services that we offer are very specialized. They're really focused on trauma that's linked to abuse. And there is an intake process that takes place, and there's a treatment plan that's put together based on what those trauma symptoms are. It provides a dedicated space to promote healing and equip children with resources so that they're not revictimized. We know that a child who's been a victim of abuse is likely to be revictimized, so we make sure that they've got some safety tools and techniques when they approach graduation of services. We offer a monthly case review. It's an opportunity where all of our partners come together to check in and coordinate the unique needs of each case and the child and their family members. And we also provide support to our partners, law enforcement and CPS, as needed. And that could be in the form of anything from additional mental health services for them, being first responders, and/or training. We offer awareness and prevention, not just to the community, but as I mentioned earlier, in the school system. We're so proud of the partnership and the relationships that we've built with the schools that we've been invited in as child abuse experts to be able to deliver, sorry, safety education directly to children. And the curriculum that's utilized is very age-specific, and it is customized. So a kindergartner gets a very different message than a third grader versus a middle school versus a high school student. And then, separate and apart for that, we also offer training and education prevention to community members, so that we can all do a better job. Until I stepped into this role, I didn't know that every adult in the state of Texas is required to report any suspicion of child abuse. And even if I did, I wouldn't have known how to report it. And so our community awareness efforts really take and emphasize, place a big emphasis on that, because if it's not your child, it's very likely that it might be one of their friends, if we think about that one in 10. And would you be prepared if a child came to you and disclosed something that was happening? We also leverage volunteers primarily for external events, but we do have some onsite opportunities, such as office assistance, family engagement, special projects, and facility care. And then off-site, we have volunteers that serve on committees, awareness booths, and auxiliary groups. And then, this is just a high-level overview of some of the impact that we've had. I need to try to read my slide. So in fiscal year '23, and this is specifically for the City of Fayette. So in fiscal year '23, there were, our fiscal year is September 1st through August 31st. So from September to August in '22 to '23, there were 194 services offered to residents of the City of Fayette. There were comprehensive services, and these services include case coordination, a joint investigation, forensic interviewing, family advocacy, counseling, court prep, expert testimony if a case goes to trial. And then at the time, even though we were doing community education and training, we weren't in the schools yet, so we don't have a real good measure, but there was some impact in '23 for prevention education. And then in fiscal year '24, there were 277 residents, receiving 476 comprehensive services provided. And you can see in our entry into the schools, we had a real significant impact with reaching 1,763 primarily students, although there are some numbers for community education built in there. And in fiscal year '25, to date, again, we, this data is through the end of June, so we still have data for July and August yet to come. We're just wrapping up our August data now. But there were 215 residents in the city that received some form of service. The comprehensive direct services, 540 were delivered, and 2,300 students and community education services, or 2,300 individuals received pretty much life-saving information this past year. And we're really proud of that growth and how we continue to expand. Both school districts are asking us to take on additional grade levels. We have limited bandwidth, so we are doing the best with what we have at this point in time. And at this point, I can stop and ask any questions. It's a very complex model. When you look at the model, it really shouldn't work. You know, we've got no authority or say or jurisdiction over any of our partners. Law enforcement has always been here. They are always going to investigate and try to seek justice. The Department of Family and Protective Services has always been here. Their number-one goal is to make sure children are safe in their home. And of course, we are not prosecutors or medical professionals. I'll take any questions.
Well, thank you for that presentation. Any questions or comments from council?
Hi, how are you? So number one, I just wanted to say thank you so much for all the work that the organization does for the community here in Rockwall County. I did a tour almost a year ago with Ms. Vera, and she was amazing. And you can tell she's very passionate about the work that she does for the CAC. And you can tell she's very passionate about the work that she does for the CAC. My question for you is specifically in regards to your fundraising event that happens in September, Bubbles and Bags. I'm assuming it's in September. I believe that's when it was last year. My specific issue is with what could only be described as first responders and blue jean speedos coming out to inappropriate music and dancing on a stage in front of women that are hooting, hollering, waving dollar bills, and things of that nature. And for me, as a mother of three, I have a huge problem with the manner in which y'all raise funds for that specific event. I know that that happens in other counties. My issue is not with other counties. My issue is with the one that I represent. And I have a huge problem with that event. And so, when I spoke to Ms. Farah about that, she said that things have been done where y'all were not going to invite back the officer that supposedly did that. My problem is that what measures have y'all put into place to make sure that this is an environment where a first responder who is seen at this event is not going to be the one that takes a sexualized child, somebody who has just been abused, one of these 70 children that you have every month? I want to make sure that we're not having officers and first responders, firemen, out there half-naked, dancing in a manner that is sexualized for an organization that is specifically geared towards protecting children.
Yes, I appreciate that. And yes, I think, you know, when you look at that event, it is designed to be a fun event. It receives a great deal of support for our community based on the attendance. And attendees at the event participate in a lot of different things. There are photo opportunities, there are games that they can enjoy. And the highlight, you know, there's a silent auction, there's cakes that they bid on, and it's just a fun girls' night. And really, the focus, though, is on playing bingo. And the outcome of that round of bingo is an opportunity to win a designer handbag. That's the focus. The designer handbags are modeled by first responders, and that really kind of came about when you look at the work that's done and the darkness and the heaviness of what they look. When you are sitting, holding space for a child who has to share one of the most difficult things of their life, it really provides an opportunity for some camaraderie among the partners to get out in front of that investigative side and get in front of it and do something fun and productive. And to your point, though, perception is reality. And that was, it's never intended to be that. There are volunteers that engage in our external events like Bubbles and Bags. And I would hate for, like, the misguided action and decision of a volunteer to really overshadow the entirety of the event and the entirety of the work that's done. I think, you know, when we first got started and we pulled our multidisciplinary team together, there were over 45 or 50 people, where we said, "Okay, you're gonna be a team." That doesn't happen overnight. We know that it's through an evolution of forming, storming, norming, and performing. It's about communication, it's about building trust. And in that same vein, I think one of the things, one of the strengths that we've seen is we've never been afraid to accept feedback. And when something goes wrong, or is out of the norm, or is not something that we expect, or doesn't meet or rise to our level of expectations, it gets addressed. And it has been addressed. Certainly, some of the volunteers, I think that they were none of our community partners. They are sort of outside of our community. And our partners do realize the level of expectation that we have around that event, the image that it has, and the impact around that. And we want to be proud of the work that we do. We've worked really hard to have the impact that we've had, and we want that to be reflected in all the things we do, including the fundraising.
So, what I didn't hear you say is that you have spoken to the future participants, and they have been told that that is unacceptable behavior, and it's not gonna happen this year at the Children's Advocacy Center?
It won't happen this year nor any future event. They are talked to, they're given guidelines on a regular basis. They're told that it's always about the bag and the expectation. I mean, it really is, the focus really has shifted to it being more of an elevated, it really should be a spotlight on our partners, and that's what we've discussed doing. They do really difficult jobs every single day.
Absolutely. And we want to honor them and not have them out there shaking a tail feather for the Children's Advocacy Center, for sure.
Yeah, and so, that's been addressed, they've been spoken to, and even the ones that haven't been recruited yet. That's always a part of the training, it's always something that we talk about. And again, you know, we hate that, you know, there's misguided decisions and things that are made by our volunteers, and we would just hate for that to be a reflection of the good work that's being done.
Absolutely, y'all do amazing work, and I truly do believe in y'all's mission. I think y'all do an amazing job, especially the staff that I met. They were absolutely awesome. Not taking anything away from them. I think that the other is just a distraction from y'all's real mission. And it would be a shame, it is a shame, that something like that happened. And it did distract from the good work that y'all did. So, thank you for explaining.
Of course, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Hatley?
I'd just like to thank y'all for allowing me to tour a few Saturdays back. It was very insightful. I could tell y'all cared deeply about what you do. I mean, that came through very, very obviously. And like I said, I'd like to get a lot more involved, help raise money. And I'd like to get some regular citizens here in Fayette to get something going and work with you guys on creating some fundraisers and get you more resources on there, because of the wonderful work that y'all do. But I wanted to thank y'all very much for that.
Thank you, thank you for attending. And invitation is extended to anyone. I know Councilmember Chin has been, you were there a couple of weekends ago, and really, that invitation, it really kind of sheds light on, it's one thing to hear about it, but when you walk through, when you walk through that threshold of the blue door, it just really shines a different light on it.
Ms. Huffman?
Thank you for your presentation, and you all do some very important work. Can you give me an idea about how many people are employed by this service? And where your general idea of where your funding goes?
Yes, so where the funding comes from, where it goes?
How you use the funding, sorry.
Most of the funding goes to direct services. We have 19 staff members who provide the services at the CAC. On the non-operational side, there are just three staff members who don't provide direct services, although a little bit part-time. There's me as the CEO. We have a Director of Finance, and both of us also do kind of serve in the capacity of a family advocate from time to time. We are cross-trained. And then, we have a development person and somebody who's working on stewardship. I would say of the funding that's received, and this has swayed significantly from when we first got started as a brand-new organization, of course. I would say the majority of our funding came from state or federal grants. But over time, as our population has grown, the need for our services, there's a direct correlation. And so, we went from five to 19 staff members in a fairly short period of time, and our funding has swayed the other way, where state and federal funds cover, depending on the year and the revenue that comes in from fundraising, can be about 30, on the higher end, 40% of our budget, and the rest of it comes from local funding.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any other comments? All right, thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kovacs, who's next?
I believe the next person is Lone Star CASA. Omar's gonna set him up. And just a quick note, Matt wavering had mentioned to us last week that, you know, with, we may have some, with moving everyone to the sticker fee, or the fee that's assessed by the county, there may be some cuts to funding. What we wanted to also do is mention, we didn't put it in the staff summary, but we'd also like to offer each of the groups a social membership to the hub, which is our third-floor co-working space in downtown Fayette. That's worth about $3,000 annually, and so that we can offer that. We still have some social memberships we can give out. So, we've got, each of those groups will be able to get that for at least a year, I think.
Okay, welcome.
Okay. Hi, my name's Lauren Rowe. I'm the Executive Director of Lone Star CASA. CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. And so, where we come in is we're actually written in the family code. We started in the '70s, not here in Washington. And we started in Rockwall County in '92, and then we expanded into Kaufman County in 2004. So, as I said, CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. So, what happens is when a child is found, you know, that they've been abused or neglected, but unfortunately, it's not just by someone, it's by the person that they live with. And the department has determined that they can't remain safely in their home. That's when a judge orders that temporary custody gets placed to the state. When they order that, that is when they assign a CASA, a guardian ad litem, to that case. And so, from the beginning of that civil case that gets opened between the state and the parents, we get assigned. And what a CASA is, is basically supposed to be an unbiased opinion. They're coming into the case after investigation, right after the judge has already ruled to remove the child. That's when the volunteer comes into play. And it's, like I said, it's a guardian ad litem. It's written in this family code, and so, they will follow this case as long as it is open. And so, you can see on the screen here, there's just some services that we do. So, one thing is we visit every child monthly. That's a requirement, no matter where the child is. We have continuing education. Our volunteers have to have 30 hours of pre-service training before they are court-appointed. They will get sworn in here in Rockwall County by Judge Hall. And once they do that, they have to have continuing education of 12 hours. They meet with all the parties on the case, right? So, they're coming in unbiased, they're looking at the child, they're looking at the siblings, they're looking at the parents, they're looking at their support system, right? They're looking at what the caseworker's saying. They get to know the education, their teachers, their psychiatrist, all of this. And then, they put all that into basically their assessment of what's in the best interest. They go to court hearings, they are required to testify to the judge to say what is in the child's best interest. And so, at the beginning, it happens at 14 days, and then it happens every 90 days on the case, they go and testify. They write these lovely court reports as well, just to make sure that everybody on the case knows what's going on. And they're obviously documenting all of this. But really, the key is that they're sitting there and getting to know everybody involved in the case. And just so you guys know, kids stay in care, on average, 22 months in Rockwall County. So, that means that they are in the foster care system or the child welfare system for 22 full months. We are appointed to that case for that full time, right? Could be shorter, it could be longer, but we work with that case the full length of time that it's in care. And with that, we provide 112 services to each of those children. So, total, for the city of Fayette, we served five children, which represented 21 family members. And we served them with 560 services. And like I said, these are ongoing support services. And it's really critical, we do our role. If I can tell you just a few things. One, 88% of our recommendations that go to the judge are accepted. That is not true even of the child welfare system, right? But it is true for CASA, because these are volunteers who are highly trained, who have an unbiased way of looking at everything. And that's really the goal. And I'm also really proud to say that we work, these 21 family members are really important to us, because 92% of the children we work with get returned to family or family friends. And that is incredible in the state of Texas. But it is so important to us to make sure that these families get the support, the services they need. We do something called collaborative family engagement, where we bring everybody in on the family, long-lost relatives, cousins, we'll do it over Zoom and in-person. But the point is, how do we support this child and their family? So, the child can go back home safely, but also thrive. It's not just about them going back safe, right? CPS or the government has to determine that. We get to say what is in their best interest. And like I said, 92% of the time, it is to be reunited with family and friends. And so, those 560 services, like I said, could be us driving to go visit that child. It could be us going to court. It could be talking with a therapist or reviewing those notes, and then talking, going to the jail, and talking with the mom or the dad, right? Getting information, talking with relatives. So, how much does this cost us? Well, in the family code, we actually are required to use volunteers. And that is because they want somebody who is unbiased and not paid to do this work, to be able to kind of look at it in a different perspective. And actually, I'll tell you, a lot of our teenagers make comments about, "Well, you're the only one not paid to come see me." And it's so true. And so, our volunteers, because we have them, we have nine staff members that support over 100 volunteers. We actually have many from Fayette. And so, those volunteers have a direct staff person that supports them when they are dealing with stuff that they are not quite sure how to deal with, or when they want to talk through something on a case. They get to talk with one staff member who walks through that with them. And in case they can't go on a visit that month because something came up, our staff can step in and help with that, and they do. And so, total for the city of Fayette, and these are kids that came from the city of Fayette. I say that because we have other children on our caseloads that do live in your city currently. But how we look at it is a removal zip code, right? Because if they've come from Fayette, it doesn't necessarily mean they stay in Fayette. The family may stay in Fayette. But it also may mean we have a kid that came from Kaufman who now lives with a foster family here in Fayette, right? Or a family member here in Fayette. So, I just wanted to talk about that. So, for the child's safety fee, what is it that I was looking for? So, like I said, it cost us last year $17,500. You guys know our communities are growing, unfortunately. Not unfortunately, that's not unfortunate, sorry. But unfortunately, with that brings abuse and neglect, that's what I was trying to say. And I know Patricia just talked about the abuse and neglect, and these are only, we're only serving on the ones who can't stay safely in their home, right? That's where we step in. And so, we were asking for $2,000 a quarter of that child's safety fee. I think that, I think somebody said $6,000 to $7,000, so I guess you could say it's 33% maybe. And what it would go to is our volunteer mileage, our volunteer recruitment and retention. As I said, we have 100 volunteers who do this work, and it is essential that we keep them, because they're well-trained, and they have the relationship. Like I said, that 22 months, that volunteer never changes. Even though they change schools, they change caseworkers, they change homes, that volunteer stays the same. And that's actually, in my opinion, the most important thing that they can do is be that solid person who can also help everybody else on the case when they change, understand what's really going on. They also, obviously, it would go to ongoing casework and then consistent advocacy for children. So, I want to end real quick just with a story of a kid that actually came from Fayette. So, he came into care the very beginning of our last fiscal year, FY '24. He was 13, he came in with his 12-year-old brother. Well, his 12-year-old brother was able to go to his dad. Mom signed away her rights, meaning mom's the one who called the department. Mom gave up her rights, she did not want it. We call that refusal to accept parent responsibility. So, unfortunately, then you have this 13-year-old kid, and his dad had already signed away his rights. So, we've got this kid, he's now 15 today. And our case, our volunteer worker drives to Houston every month to see this kid and to provide services. And at this time, this kid is projected to stay in care until he ages out at 18. And so, that's a little bit about the impact of our work, that there's nobody else there for that 15-year-old. Unfortunately, his mom and his dad are not an option. Now, we have found another sibling, an older sibling, and he has contact with them, but that older sibling's not in a place to take him, because he's only 21. And he's still trying to figure out his life. So, but I just want you guys to know, that's a little bit about that advocacy. And so, that person has been with him for almost two years now, and will continue to be with him until the age of 18. And that's really the impact of the services we provide for the city of Fayette. So, I'd like to stop, say thank you for your time, and ask you if you have any questions.
Well, thank you for that presentation. Ms. Huffman? Oh, no, okay. Okay, Ms. Chin?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I did want to make a comment and just say, I'm uniquely qualified to speak on y'all's organization, and I think y'all do amazing, absolutely amazing work. My oldest son is adopted. He came from an abusive upbringing, and we had to go through CASA in order to do home studies. And y'all were great in transitioning him. And so, I have nothing but great things to say, and y'all do amazing work. So, thank you for all of the great things that y'all do in our community here in Fayette and Rockwall. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin.
Any other comments?
Yeah, one quick question. So, if you go back a couple of slides, we had the money, back one more.
Oh, one more.
There you go, right there. So, last year, how much did we give to?
Yeah, so, we received $5,000, that was in the budgeted line item. It's my understanding that this year, that will be removed from the line item. And so, the funding that we will receive from the city of Fayette would be coming from the child's safety fee. Correct me if I'm wrong, City Manager. Okay. And so, with the 15%, that would actually be less than $5,000 for us. And so, that's why we were asked... And so that's why we were asking for $2,000 per quarter. And like I said, if you think about it, we provide 560, that was under $32 a service that we provide.
Yeah, because I'm, I mean, I'm looking here, you spent $17,500, and we gave you $5,000. So it looks like we're about $12,500 short on what we burnt up. Obviously, there's some state fees and, or state funds in there as well, but I'm just trying to figure out where we fall short. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harper.
Okay, any others? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And anytime if y'all think of any other questions, please feel free to ask.
Absolutely, will do. Okay, Mr. Krevex, who's next?
Boys and Girls Club.
Okay.
Thank you, Omar.
No, it's just, it's all the same. I just send it in two different formats. So this is great, thank you. Perfect. Okay. Hi, thanks for having us today.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, to talk about our organizations and the great things we're doing for kids. I, I'm Jenny Krueger, I'm the CEO of Boys and Girls Club in Northeast Texas. We have clubs in Rockwall, Greenville Commerce, and Lone Oak. We have two clubs in Rockwall County, one serves teenagers, and the other one is at an elementary school that serves primarily elementary school-age students. But we bus kids in from all over the county to be served at those two locations. My Fayette numbers are here, I just realized that I've got Greenville numbers over on the side of this slide. So what I'm wanting to show you here is just the basic formula for impact for our organization. So we serve, we serve kids after school and during the summertime, basically during out-of-school time, which we know that during out-of-school time is when kids are most likely to end up getting in trouble or to be, to be in danger, you know, they might be at home alone, they might be in danger of, of a lot of the things that the other two organizations talked about today. So we are really focused more on the prevention side of things, rather than the intervention side of things. So we're available to youth during out-of-school time. We serve the kids that need us the most. That can look like a lot of different things. It can look like youth from, from low socioeconomic families that need an affordable place to be after school and in the summer. But it can also look like our Youth of the Year this year, who is a teenager that has been homeschooled, is autistic, and was looking for a place to come and be accepted and be able to socialize and be able to plug in with her peers in a smaller, more intipent setting that would support her needs in that way. So those who need us most can look like a number of different things. And what we provide is what we call an outcome-driven club experience. So we are not a cheap daycare. We are youth development professionals, offering targeted programs, high-yield learning activities. We are measuring the ROI on our programs, and we know that they work. We know that kids, that kids and teenagers that participate in our programs are more successful academically, they're living healthier lifestyles, they are, they're healthier from a mental and social wellness standpoint, and they're ready for the workforce. This is some information on an impact study that we've done nationally as a Boys and Girls Club. For every dollar a community invests in a Boys and Girls Club, $9.60 goes back into your community. And those, that ROI comes from a couple of different things. One is parents having the opportunity to go back to school or take an extra job, because they have a safe place for their kids to be. We, I told a story at the, at the grand opening ceremony that we did, of the basketball court renovation at Gloria Williams Park, of, of a Boys and Girls Club alumni, Jordan, who has come back to Rockwall to be a ninth-grade basketball coach. This will be her first year to do that. We served her through the club, and her mom told me when I spoke to her that the club changed their lives mainly because she was able to go back to nursing school, because she had the club. They're offering services to Jordan and, and helping them in that way. So we know that we can have, and then the second is, we're serving youth who might not be on track to graduate or give back in a productive way, once they do graduate. And we have programs that help get them back on track. And so if someone who was not likely to graduate or be contributing in a meaningful way to your community gets on track to do that, there are future earnings and savings that come from that as well. The program that, we offer a number of different programs. We have like 50 different curriculums that fall under five different core program areas. We offer tons of different services, as do most of the nonprofits have done tons of different services. But today, I just want to, I want to focus on, on one program that we offer that, that we typically partner with city and county governments on, because it's such a meaningful program. So these are our programs where we identify youth that are likely to end up in the juvenile justice system. And they're, and they're, they have high A scores, that means adverse childhood experiences, single-parent households, being raised by grandparents, parents in the, in the justice system themselves, those types of things. We identify those youth, and we put them through our Smart Moves program, which is a prevention program that is built around making sure that these risky behaviors are addressed and that we are able to put them on a better path. We have a partnership right now with the Rockwall Municipal Courts, where any teenager that comes, so any, any child nine years old or up that comes to the Boys and Girls Club has the opportunity to attend this program. But we also have taken it to the next level, where the municipal courts are referring teenagers to us through a teen diversion program that they have for any Class C misdemeanors. And that program has been very successful, and we are actually able to, to even measure recidivism rates here around, around what's happening with the teenagers in this program. But as a, as a statewide program, when we put someone through this, we have the opportunity to follow their social security number from the time they're nine until they're 18, to see if we have been successful at keeping them out of the juvenile justice system. And we've been doing this program statewide in Boys and Girls Clubs for 15 years, and we've put over 10,000 kids through this program statewide, and we have a 97% success rate. It's remarkable from the standpoint that it costs $75,000 to $95,000 a year to have a child in the juvenile justice system, even if it's just going through like minor municipal misdemeanor, you know, type things. It costs $3,400 to put a child through a Boys and Girls Club program. And so it doesn't matter, you know, what the budget financier is, it makes, when things are tough, it makes a whole lot of fiscal sense to spend that money on the front end, rather than on the back end of things. And so the Smart Moves is the program that we used, and you may have seen in your packet a report that we turned in at the end of the, of the, this last funding year, from the funding that you guys gave us. And it's like pages and pages, it has their unique identifying information blanked out, but it's pages of kids that have attended, and it shows you how many times they attended the club and how many times they received a Smart Moves program, because we measure that. And we're able to tell you which ones of them are from Fayette, and, and how many programs that they participate in, and then whether, and then we track them all the way until they're 18 years old, to make sure that we know that we're being successful with the program. So I'm going to come back to these Fayette members really quickly. Last year, out of all the youth that we served at our Rockwall County Clubs, 83 of them were from, were from Fayette. We offered over 1,000 hours of programming to these youth. We served 11,200 snacks to these youth and 9,400 meals, because they get a dinner meal before, they get a snack, and then they get a dinner meal before they leave the club. We spend approximately $121,000 on these 83 youth. Forty-five of them go to our summer program, which is about $1,000 per kid, and then the rest of them go to our school year program, which is about $2,000 per kid. So total, we spend about $121,000 a year on these 83 youth. And we received $5,000 of funding last year through your general budget. Again, if we were to receive, same as what Lauren was talking about with CASA, if we were to receive 15% of the safety funds and the general budget went away, we would be receiving less than that $5,000. And our services to Fayette kids are continuing to grow every year. I asked for $2,000 a quarter, which is about, well, which is a third of the funds. That would be $8,000 for the year. That would cover eight kids to go through a summer program, or it would cover 160 Smart Moves lessons. Those lessons cost us about $50 apiece. I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
Hi, pardon my ignorance, I, where is the Boys and Girls Club for Fayette?
So right now, we, we offer our programs in two locations. One is Shannon Elementary School, and we bus kids from all over the county to Shannon Elementary after school. And then we have a teen center, which is currently operating out of a room at First United Methodist Church. And so kids from all over the county come to that teen center also.
Okay, gotcha. Because I have a nine-year, I have three kids, nine to 16, and I see, y'all handed out 11,000 snacks, they're about to eat me out of house and home right now. And I'm just trying to figure out where I need to send them, because they're ready.
Yes, we, we offer transportation from multiple different schools and can work that out with you, if you were to, to sign them up. And we also have had conversations with City Manager about the possibility of offering some spring break or winter break, or even some small summer mini camp programs out of the community center here in Fayette. It just is going to take us being able to build the capacity financially to be able to offer that, but that is a desire that we have for the future.
Yeah, I think that's great, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Huffman?
So just for clarity, are you saying that your, all your services are no charge to the people who, to the children who participate?
So our summer program is a 10-week program, and it costs $200 for the entire summer. It's $20 a week. We keep our costs low on purpose, so that there are no barriers to entry. And then our after-school program costs between $35 and $50 a month, depending on if they use transportation. So likely, all of the Fayette kids are using transportation, it's costing $50 a month. But that in comparison to a typical after-school program, you know, is normally $300 a month.
It's very reasonable.
Yes, and less than 10% of our funding organization-wide comes from state government federal funds. The majority, 90% of our funding comes from grant efforts that we do, special events, and then fundraising in the local communities that we serve.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you very much for that presentation and answering our questions.
Thank you for ignoring the right side of the screen on my other slide.
Okay.
Good evening, thank you so much for having us tonight. My name's Kristin, I'm the Executive Director for Women in Need. And I know we've been listening to a lot of stuff tonight, and some of it's pretty heavy, but I just want to honor how happy that I am to work in a county like Rockwall, to have all these services that are provided for children, because they're needed. One of the things that we do at Women in Need is we serve men, women, and children. So it's, even though we're women in need, we go by win often, just so y'all know. This year, Women in Need has been an organization for 42 years. At our organization, we provide emergency shelter, crisis and text hotline, prevention education, support groups, legal advocacy, former residential programs, aftercare and support, support for children while the moms are getting that support group, because I often will see the most growth with our clients in that support group moment. They know that they're not alone. So while the mom is having that support group, the children is having their own support group separate. I have special advocates that work in our shelter that help to reform relationships between the children and the mom. That bond has often been broken, because there's so much chaos going on in the house. Moms just trying to survive. And I know that abuse happens to men too, so please forgive the generalization of male/female. But in our shelter, we do house women and children. If a man's a victim, we will house them in a hotel or a men's shelter as well. But they're still open to receiving all the services that we have. Stats that have come out are pretty, pretty intense these days. One in three women at some point of their life will have been a victim. When we're doing community events, I like to go one, two, three, one, two, three, because it really shows, men, one in four. That's kind of astounding to a lot of people to recognize. Often, men don't speak up, because, one, they don't want to feel de-masculated, but also, when they come to Women in Need, "Oh, you're going to that women's place." No, we're here to serve people. We see them for who they are. Everybody deserves to live a life free of violence. Children, more than 15.5 million children in the U.S. live in homes where domestic violence has occurred. Children who witness domestic violence are at greater risk for many things, but emotional, also modeling what they've been witnessed, and then also potentially being a victim or an abuser later in life. With children, often what you'll see on here, the anxiety, the fear, the depression. Sometimes they're, they're almost a secondary thought when the mom or the victim is in crisis. But again, we have those children advocates that are going to work with those kids to let them know. We partner with CASA, we partner with the CAC, we partner with Boys and Girls Club. We all work together as a network to help these children. But when they're in our shelter, or when they're receiving support group, our clients, we're working with those children too, so that they don't have to be in silence of what they've been through. They need a safe place, they need to be able to heal, they need to be able to feel heard. Honestly, when I've had one Rockwall client, I'll share a quick story with you guys, because I don't want to keep you too long. But a young man, he had been a victim, he was actually 18, so he didn't qualify necessarily for all the children's services. But he came to us to get a protective order. His stepdad had been abusing him for years. When he came to us, he told me after the fact that I was the first person he ever shared that information with, that was actually his advocate at the time. He had never opened up about that type of abuse. I want to meet people, and I tell the staff, "We're going to meet them where they're at. We're never going to force or impose or tell somebody what to do. We're going to hear their story, we're going to give them healthy options." That stepdad was prosecuted and went to prison. I walked with him along the way, that young man who was 18, 19, when he got prosecuted. I stood by him when he did his Victim Impact Statement in front of his stepdad and told him, "You thought you were stealing something from me, but you didn't." Usually, I don't get too emotional, I'm pretty even. That one hit me pretty hard. Later on, after the fact, he told me, "If you wouldn't have believed me, I don't think I would still be here today. My plan was to end my life that night if you didn't believe me." Say less, I will believe you. I will believe you, I will walk alongside you, I will be your partner. For 2024, over, we serve Rockwall, Hunt, and Raines Counties. So in our counties that we served, we had 706 non-duplicated clients. That's not including the repeat services, the support groups, the different types of needs that they had, court accompaniment. 176 came through our shelter, and 71 of those were children. Our mission is, Women in Need is a multifaceted domestic violence resource center that shelters advocates and... that shelters, advocates, and educates for secure today and offers hope for safer tomorrow. Part of that education we do in the Teen Dating Violence Program in middle and high schools. And that's an area where we can kind of not only get in front of the prevention part of it, but also the kids will come home and tell their parents what they learned. And maybe there's a victim that will hear that information and give it to a parent, and then they'll come and get services from us. Awareness is key. Forty-two years we've been an organization. You have no idea how many times I hear people go, we never knew you were there. We never knew you served men. You know, it's, it's something we hear regularly. Part of that's on purpose because we don't want it to be everybody to know where we are. But at the same time, we want those that need our services to know where we are. I do have Tiffany Storm with me today. She is my Director of Outreach and Communications. She's been a former educator with us too and has taught in the middle and high school. Her passion is education, awareness. We are happy to serve in the community. We're happy to give training and education. Recently, I did one with CASA to teach their advocates what to look for. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Questions or comments? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you very much for that presentation.
Yeah, you're welcome for keeping it short.
Okay, so that, that concludes our presentations. Yes, all right. Any other discussion on the activities and performance of the group council? Are we ready to move on? Okay, what's our next item, please?
Next will be Agenda Item 7D, which is discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding Resolution Number R 2025-067, allocating child safety fee funds in accordance with Section 502.403 of the Texas Transportation Code and Section 102.014 of the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, designated percentage distributions to eligible organizations, and providing an effective date.
Okay, Mr. Kovacs, do you want to say something?
Yes, sir, this is the same resolution that we brought to you at the last meeting. We did have one, we did have one error that we made. We sent funds, we were intending to hold all the fiscal year '25 and disperse them all with fiscal year '26. But we did end up sending first and second quarter funds to the CAC about, I guess, a couple of weeks ago. But, or maybe three weeks ago. So that is going to alter the fiscal '25 so we could still make a smaller payment to CAC if we wanted to use the distribution in the resolution. So we put that in, it's in your staff summary of what that would look like. So a little bit of a, of a mistake for '25. But the essence of this is the, the budget eliminates any general revenue dispersments to nonprofits other than for senior services. And so this, then the policy would be moving them to the, to the revenue share of the, of this fee that the county imposes and sends to the cities. So it's for your action tonight. And that'll put that in the budget as far as those distributions.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, with that, looking at last meeting's agenda, it had said $13,468 had not yet been dispersed this week. Or this meeting, it says it has been dispersed. Was that going to get dispersed no matter what we decided for fiscal year 2026?
No, no, our intention was to keep all the '25 and then send it together with whatever the '26 disparate, just to make it easier.
But the amount wouldn't have changed, is my question. Was, did the amount get changed because we sent it early? Are we discussing how much we were sending to the CAC? Or that was going to be the amount that they got regardless?
That was going to be the amount that we were going to carry forward into the next budget year, essentially. And then disperse all of '25 and all of '26 based on the distribution.
Okay.
In other words, that money would have been subject to whatever percent breakdown we would come up with.
Correct.
That's why you say down here, if they would receive an additional, the CAC would receive an additional $3,159, and that plus what's already been dispersed would equal the 60%?
For fiscal year '25. Based on, based on the estimates for what we're thinking '25 will come in.
So what happens if we decide we didn't want to give that much to the CAC? How do we take that back at this point?
I think taking back would be difficult, but perhaps you could not send them their extra.
Right, but from what it, I'm, I'm just trying to follow all this. So it says we would be giving them an extra $3,159. Is that correct?
Yes, if you use the 60%.
Right, if we use that, but because we haven't made that decision yet, are we kind of forced at this point to go with whatever percentage? Let's say we don't give them the $3,159, right? If we decided we were going to honor $5,000 like we did last budget for every single person, I don't know if, I, I mean, I haven't added all that up yet, but I'm not sure if the math works if we were to honor what we did last year and do it again this year. Do you understand? Kind of thing?
I have something I wanted to add to the discussion.
Okay, and I think this will, I think this will kind of comment on what you're saying.
I had worked up something on allocating this. It's a worksheet I did. I, I do things in Excel based on the 60, 15, 15, 10% allocation. So if we change that, my worksheet changes. But I did this just because I, I'm actually, I'm, I don't want to investigate or anything, but I'm still just sort of puzzled as to how this much money comes in, and then without the council deliberating or having any involvement, it just went out. And it, every single, 100% of it went to all to one organization. It was like the, it was like the smartest money that had ever come in the door. It knew where to go somehow. So I had come up with something, and I, when we met two weeks ago, we had enough money that we could easily fix because this doesn't go back that far. It only goes back to a dispersment. The first dispersment was made in August of last year. So less than a year ago was when this started, and it was all going to CAC. And with the money we had sitting in the fund two weeks ago, we could have corrected it, calculated what we want to give, the 60, 15, 15, 10, and dispersed it, and then just trued everybody up with our intentions if the council had been able to deliberate on this. Since that money's now gone, it would take a little bit more, a few more payments from the, what is called the sticker revenue fund before we could true it up. But I had, I did a worksheet. I'm going to, is it okay to hand it out to everybody? I have enough for, is it okay?
I don't know because that hasn't been made part. Stuff we're looking at hasn't been made part of, of, of.
It's legally fine to pass it out.
Okay. This is just a suggestion, and the only purpose behind it is to true up what everybody gets to what we're going to ultimately decide was our intention. So it's not in doing this, per this worksheet that nine of us have now, it's not to take any away from anybody. It's to give everybody what we would have deliberately given them. That's it. So.
So to make sure I'm understanding, Mr. Manaval, your, this would, this would correct the prior dispersment that was not supposed to go out based on our 60%, 15%, 15%, and 10% guidelines?
Yes, and it would also correct the, the dispersments that were made in August and November of last year. Because that was done without any council input. There wasn't any, like, we, there was recently a committee that got together of City Manager Kovacs and Chief Lombard and Vicky, City Secretary Vicky Ridicgle, and Omar.
Yeah.
Sorry, I forgot Omar's last name. So that was worked up. This is just to distribute all the money if it had been done deliberately.
From day one.
I meant by deliberating and putting all the information together. And it doesn't, we're not going back and like correcting years back. I mean, that would be punitive. We're only going back less than a year ago.
Okay, so does that, does that, for you, your question kind of was the, if we, if we change the numbers, which I think we're looking at kind of two things here. One, we're looking at the, the money that, that has been given, and, but we also need to look at, to, just, I guess, to see if everybody's on board with the current breakdown of the percentages going to these four organizations.
What, what is the percentage that we have already given to them? So we already gave it, without our approval, $13,468. So what is that percentage that CAC got? Did they get the full 60%? I mean, I.
Almost, yeah, they've got, I think, $3,000.
The $3,000.
We've got like $3,000.
159 plus what they've gotten would equal the 60%.
Correct.
Okay. So really, as far as, as far as that goes, if we were going to reduce to, to raise some of the others, because I'll say, just so, so everybody's aware, I don't, I don't love the idea of a percentage that, that gives less to Lone Star and the Boys and Girls Club than we've given in the past from the, from the general fund. So I would like to see where the council stands on that. But it does kind of sound like we're, the, the limit we have with the CAC is that 3,159 in terms of whatever that percentage would be. And, and then moving forward, we can change that. But, but that, that limit is, we can only say, okay, we're going to, we're going to take that 3,159 away from the CAC. Should that be what the council wants to do? That's the money we're playing with for the CAC. Am I correct in that?
Yes, if you want to stick to the same distribution in the resolution.
But we're not talking about fiscal year 2026, or we are. I mean, what you've given to them is for 2025, correct?
Correct.
And so we're talking about what we're going to do for 2026 now?
Yes.
Okay.
But you can also talk about '25.
Gotcha. I'm just trying to separate it in my mind. So, and then, you know, for anybody else who may be confused. I am not comfortable with the government picking winners and losers. I would appreciate, I would like it if everybody got the same amount, the same percentage, so 25%. All these organizations are amazing organizations that do a lot of work in our community. And I'm not sure why the CAC is the favorite. I know, you know, we use them a lot, but from the presentations, we use all these services a lot. So that would be my proposal. I'm not comfortable with the 60% for them, especially seeing as how last year, they received more money, and FATE is only growing. We're not getting smaller. We're not having less kids. They're going to need more support, not less. So I'm not comfortable with reducing the dollars and cents amount. And I would be more inclined to make everything even and give every organization in 2026 the same amount.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chen. I, I don't know who's next in line. So, Mr. Hatley, Mr. Manaval, would you want to be? Oh, okay, Mr. Hatley. The floor is yours.
I was going to ask, when did we know, when did we determine that we were going to get all the sticker money? And how was it, who made the decision to lump it all to one organization last year?
So the sticker, I guess, let me go back through.
Was it budgeted, or was it in the budget?
It was in the budget, yes.
Okay.
So the sticker money, now Patricia's out here somewhere. There she is. So what we had learned from, from working with the county and the children's advocacy centers, there was a statewide effort to create this fee. And for what we were told, that was, that was the intention is to fund these advocacy centers around the state. And so as the bill made its way through, through the process, not sure if it got expanded or whatever. We didn't really follow it that closely. I know our mayor, Mayor Billings, was, was kind of watching that as he watched all the legislative activities and we were communicating. So we were seeing this progress. So the children, so what actually what ended up having, getting done is the counties had a local option fee of up to $1.50 to fund organizations like this for these child safety activities. And so when you register your car, that's why we call it the sticker fee, is there's a little extra, there's a little bit that goes to the county for roads. And then there's a little bit, which John and I talk about all the time. And then there's a little bit that, that goes now for the, for child safety. So they, the county takes the money, and they send it to the cities based on where those car registrations take place. So what, what we understood was that money came to the city. The intent of it was for funding of these children's advocacy centers. So we send all these funds to the, in the budget and so forth. We send them to the children's advocacy center. As we learned earlier this year that there is some options for different things, we started holding the money. And I don't, I don't know if it necessarily was a good thing that we were holding the funds, but, but we could see that potentially other organizations were interested in these funds. And so we did a little bit more research into what it could be used for. And you can use it for all sorts of, you could use it for, you could give it to the school district to pay for school crossing guards. You can fund different organizations. So at that point, we started holding the, the funds. And then during the election campaign, there was this kind of this outcry about general fund money being used for certain nonprofits. So we decided in the budget this year, we, we kind of clamped down on the general fund portion of these distributions. And we focus on, the general fund could pay for senior services. And then with the new fee, we'll use this and we'll propose this, some sort of a sharing, revenue sharing. So that's kind of where we've gone from there. That's kind of the, the history of the.
Was there a particular trigger, though? Was there one person, or was it staff recommendation? That, who, was there an email? Because I don't, I don't recall it coming up during a council meeting to say, you know, where we're going to allocate all that, the money coming from.
No, that was my decision based on what we had learned and, and my working with different people.
Mr. Manaval?
Okay, this, this is not something I had really, any, spent a lot of time on, not a hill I want to die on. But it came up at the very first forum that I attended at your house. And it was a question. And I was surprised that there was, it was a question, and there was a lot of interest in it. And then actually, I did a lot of, a lot of door knocking and block walking, and it never came up. And, and it was the kind of thing I would never bring up. I didn't want to bring up hot issues. It just, no, no one said anything about it. So when it, when we addressed it, or we, it came up that we were going to have this sticker revenue money, I was just a little curious about what had happened last year. And I, I looked back to see the minutes from our budget meeting last year when the budget was approved. And I know from talking to Cody, talking during, I think when you and I talked for a while, just helping, giving me advice, warnings, and talking to Mark Summ, that this had come up during the budget cycle. And so I know it was a hot issue during the budget cycle. And when the budget was approved on September 3rd, nothing was said about the fact that we had, for this fiscal year, nothing was said about the fact that we now have this car tag sticker revenue. And we had actually made the first distribution of it on August 9th. So less than a month before the budget was approved, when there's people sitting here who would have had some interest in maybe using the sticker revenue money and not general fund revenue, actually, on this fiscal year's budget. To me, it sounds like, I don't think they knew because I think they would have spoke up and said, why are we putting general fund money in this when we've got a fund sitting there and we're actually distributing? We just distributed almost $13,000 to CAC. And we put in the budget to give them another $5,000. So actually, for fiscal year, we gave them $13,000 from the sticker revenue and then $5,000 from the general fund that I think might have been planned different if council members had all known the whole story.
So I'm sorry, are we questioning decisions? Are we using this as a process to question decisions that have been made in the past? Or are we going to focus on what we're going to do going forward? We want to, if we want to focus on the things in the past, we should, we should address that in an appropriate manner. But this is, if we're going to talk about the things going forward and what we're talking about for the rest of fiscal year '25 and, and fiscal year '26, we need to, let's, let's focus on that. I, I'm fair questioning whatever from the past. But this item in particular has to do with fiscal year '26. So I just think we need to stay on topic.
I will just say that I, I appreciate Rick's comments just because, just based on transparency. Only because last year, I certainly did not know that there was a child safety fee. Now, that's probably my ignorance. child safety fee. Now, that's probably my ignorance, I'd just gotten sworn in. Um, and the very same day that I got sworn in, I was thrown into the budget and it's overwhelming. So, you don't know what you don't know. Um, but I certainly didn't understand the child safety fee funds. And, um, I do remember speaking up against the five thousand in a meeting for CAC last year. Um, and I was the only one that spoke about it, but I did not, I was not aware at that time that there was a child safety fee fund. So, I, I appreciate the call for transparency because I think at the heart of what you're saying is that it doesn't feel like we were let in on the process last year, and it doesn't feel like we were let in on that process this year. They were already distributed this money and it seems, um, I don't know, I just, it, it seems like a little sneaky, just given the timing. We just had this talk two weeks ago and there was funds available, and today there's not funds available. So, that's all I got.
Oh, I was just gonna say, I agree. I, I do think that, that last year is relevant to this year, uh, because they are, because it is the money and the disclosure and the transparency. Uh, I do think it's relevant.
Okay, so, at this point, um, obviously, and, and again, from a, from a standpoint of, and then it's up to this council, looking at the money that was received, uh, last year, are we gonna, are we gonna look at that and make that part of the equation? Do, do we want to say, hey, what, what happened last year, as, as much as, uh, many of us sound like we don't like it, but let's move forward this year? I do want to make sure, because the, the proposal that I hear so far would be from Ms. Chin to change the current allocation of these funds to a twenty-five percent-
Right. I wanted to discuss that. I didn't want to make a motion until I receive feedback, but that is something that I am, um, supportive of, is making it even for all four organizations.
Okay, so discussion on that? Ms. Huffman?
I tend to agree with Ms. Chin. It's, they're all such worthwhile services. It's, it's hard to distinguish what, where more money should be given. So, while it may be disappointing to the, um, CAC, I tend to agree that it should be divided equally with the four groups who are very obviously serving children, which was the purpose of the money being collected in the first place.
Okay, other thoughts on that? Mr. Manival?
I was going to say, if we do divide it evenly, each of the organizations will end up receiving more than was planned for this year. So, I estimate that we should get around twenty-nine thousand, just based on what it looks like it is coming in, seventy-two, seventy-three hundred a quarter. That comes to around twenty-nine thousand. So, if we split that four ways, each group will get more than they're getting now.
Okay. Mr. Kelly?
I, I'll, I'll just say that the allocations that the staff has put together, um, comes from a committee of people that work very closely in day-to-day with these organizations, including our DPS. And, um, they, they understand the, the, I guess, fee on the street, um, understanding of how, how we use these organizations and the value they bring into the city. So, so, I, I just support the, the allocation that the, the staff has recommended strictly because of the input of, of staff, particularly our DPS department. Especially with these being essentially a value-add fee that, that while our citizens are paying it, i- it's not a tax, it's something we're, we're collecting from the county and moving around. Um, i- if we want to address money that we're giving to these organizations, we've got other ways to do that, but that's a whole different conversation as far as what we ought to be using taxpayer, taxpayer dollars for. And, and that's a, that's a whole different struggle. But otherwise, I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on the, the, the feelings of the committee and, and the, um, particularly DPS on that front.
Okay. Mr. Harper?
I agree with Mr. Kelly that the fact that, you know, lots of, lots of time and research goes in, chief, uh, deals with these people on a daily basis. He knows, just in the, the presentation alone, uh, she said seven hundred children. I mean, that's, that's a substantial amount of kids, uh, in the city of FATE by itself. Um, and I'd hate, I'd hate to cut this organization short and then the chief goes to reach out and they can't help us because the children, you know, we don't, we, they don't have the funds to do so. Um, again, I, I, I'm not saying that I-
You're talking about the Children's Advocacy Center, right?
Well, I'm, yeah, and I'm talking about just, just the same thing he said. He, well, they put together a, a committee to figure out how these funds would be best served for our city. We have the funds to pass out. And I would, I would agree that some of these maybe don't get as much use as some of the other ones. And we overuse, uh, one or two of these. I mean, we just saw that there was seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars spent in this city last year for Lone Star Casa, and we gave them five thousand dollars. So, I mean, that's, that's a twelve thousand, five hundred dollar shortfall already from the start. So, again, I, if we don't trust our staff to, to do what's right and to tell us where we need to spend the money, then I, I don't know why we have them.
So, my question is, if, based on what you said, Lone Star Casa, they have a twelve thousand dollar shortfall because, and, and we're giving them less than the five thousand we gave them last time. But we want to trust the recommendations by our staff. But the recommendations by our staff actually cut the funding from last year. So, I'm not comfortable with that. And I, I get, I get that, you know, there's experts out there that know more than me about where our money should and shouldn't be going. Um, but again, we're real, we're, we're taking a fee that the, that's compulsory. The government is taking this from people. They don't, they're not offering it up, right? So, it's essentially a tax. Um, and we're deciding who's worthy of that. So, I'm just uncomfortable with that. And I'm certainly uncomfortable with cutting the funding that we're giving to them that they are already expecting from us. Um, and we gave them five thousand last year. This year, we're not gonna hit that. So, um, I would like to make a motion that we, um, make it even twenty-five percent for all four organizations for the child safety fee.
I second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Uh, as far as discussion goes, just so we're clear on this, is this moving forward from this point? We're not necessarily gonna try to correct anything?
Yes, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. I don't, I don't, I think that cuts out of the bag from what I've heard.
Okay. So, no, uh, yeah. So, no trying to correct it, we're just looking at twenty-five percent across the board for twenty-twenty-six?
Though it would, it would be helpful for some direction on twenty-five, since it's been so controversial.
Okay.
For the, for the remaining fund?
For remaining, yes, yes.
Okay.
I just want to say, I, I did this worksheet, it was just for discussion. It's the kind of thing you can do with a spreadsheet. But what I would say is that for this coming, or for all the coming, um, sticker revenues that we get, if we do, do it right now at twenty-five percent and do that until we do a budget next year, and we might look at this again. But I think that might be the simplest way, just going forward, to correct what happened two weeks ago. Just a simple fix, because as it stands right now, um, one group has already gotten a hundred percent of the money, and the other three have not gotten any of it. So, we could go with the sixty, fifteen, fifteen, ten, and sort of like, oops, we, one got too much, and now they're gonna get sixty. We could just do for, for this coming year, the twenty-five for each. And then-
So, for twenty-twenty-six, what do you want to do, what are you proposing for twenty-twenty-five, the rest of twenty-twenty-five?
We do already have a motion on the floor.
I know, but, uh, our city manager asked for clarification for twenty-twenty-five. I was seeing if that was gonna be grouped in.
It's not part of the motion.
Did you say just for twenty-twenty-six?
Yeah, I'm talking about for twenty-twenty-six. And then, do we need to discuss that first? The twenty-twenty-five and what's happening, or we need to do the motion?
No, I guess we can, we can vote on that motion, then we can come back and talk about the rest of twenty-twenty-five. All right, so the motion is, uh, to, for, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six, twenty-five percent for each organization, and that's moving forward.
And I have more to add. Um, I realize that we're looking at an amount of money that we collect from a sticker fee. And that's somewhere around thirty-something thousand dollars. However, if these places go away, the CAC, the Lone Star Casa, they can't function, then the City of FATE will have to take up the slack and build something internally that will do the same thing, and it'll cost us substantially more money than providing donations to these basically required services. I mean, these aren't optional, they're required. So, again, we, we don't hire the staff for these, we don't, uh, have the buildings, we don't have any of that overhead. We have a small donation that someday, if we don't give them enough money, then we will have to be doing that out of our general fund as well.
And you would say that you believe that the, going from, like, for, because the Children's Advocacy Center is the only one that would be receiving less based on the percentages we're advocating for. You think that the difference between sixty percent and twenty-five percent would be enough to potentially trigger FATE having to supply a bunch of services at a more substantial cost?
I, I'm saying that we had more, we had money in the budget last year. We've taken that money out of the budget in lieu of this sticker fund. All right? If we start sticking to only what we have in the sticker fund and we're requiring more services, at some point, we're gonna have to offset these donated money services with our own services, which is going to cost the city money that's not in the budget. So, that's my, that's my only point.
Okay, Mr. Hatley?
Oh, I was gonna say, other cities don't, I've talked to Rockwall, Rockwall doesn't contribute, uh-
Point of order.
Pardon?
We're not Rockwall, this is FATE. We're talking about the FATE.
Well, I mean-
Uh, we're not talking about, we're not talking about Rockwall. We're talking about the City of FATE and what we are doing with the money that we have, which is the thirty-thousand dollars.
He interrupted me. I'm allowed to speak. You can speak when I'm done. Uh, other places don't give the money. So, it's, if you want to say we're not Rockwall, sure, we're not Rockwall. Uh, but you're saying that we're utilizing services and they're utilizing, utilizing services. I'm just countering your point. But, you know, you can argue, if you want, Scott, you can laugh all you want.
Okay, so, so it's, it's not, it's not, uh, the money's not given to Rockwall, uh, or the, the service is not given to Rockwall?
So, it's not like we're, we would be, and it's kind of a silly point to me to bring up. It's not like we're, you know, the only one that's not paying, uh, you know, on this. We are, we are actually contributing on this. And like I said, I, like I mentioned, I would love to, to organize some FATE fundraisers to help raise some private sector money. Uh, really would.
From a standpoint of if this became an issue in the future, uh, this is directed at Mr. Kovacs, this could be something that if we, uh, were to, were to ever seem to be falling short, we could address this in a future budget year. Uh, politics aside, we could, we could look at this as bringing back the, uh, donations as part of the general fund. I mean, nothing's stopping us from doing that in the year, if, in future years, if this becomes an issue where the, by allocating the sticker fund in this way hurts our ability to provide these services.
Sure. Yeah, we've got a budget workshop tonight, and you could always do it in the future year.
Okay.
So, just for reference, I, we gave five thousand dollars last year to the CAC. If we divide all four by twenty-nine thousand, and that's a rough estimate, it's still over seven thousand dollars per entity. So, they would still technically be getting more based off that number, the CAC would. So-
Okay, so the motion on the floor is for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six and even allocation of twenty-five percent. It has also been seconded. Any more discussion? Okay, let's vote. Okay, motion passes five to two. And so, now we need to discuss the remaining fund balance for the rest of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, so, we'll open the floor to discussion. Or, or a motion, if somebody-
Well, I, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, this discussion started out with us, I, for the first time, hearing about the sticker, sticker fee. Um, I, well, I'd heard about it from someone in the community who knew about it, and then I heard about it here. Uh, we've already given over thirty, thirty-three thousand of this has already gone upfront to CAC. So, we can't say by anything we're doing here tonight, just going forward for the next few months, and then into next year, actually, that we're, we're doing anything punitive to them, because they already got a hundred percent of the first, actually, the first five payments, the first five quarterly payments, they got a hundred percent of it. So, that's why I think we should, especially for twenty-twenty-five, go forward with the twenty-five percent.
Okay, so, do you want to make a motion to that?
Uh, sure. I'll make a motion that we distribute the sticker revenue fund, uh, remaining payments for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five at twenty-five percent for each of the four charities.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I do have a question before I can give a second. I don't, is that gonna mess something up? Since we've already, just the math of it, I don't know how that breaks down. Is there some issue with, with us doing that as far as the math goes?
Did you mean going forward, sir?
Yes.
Going forward.
Right, so-
So, if we're starting right now-
Third quarter for, then it's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so would you like to motion that, or would you like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? This would be a motion to moving forward, not correcting anything, uh, in the past that's been done. Moving forward, this would be the remainder of fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, allocating the funds at twenty-five percent each. No other discussion? All right.
And this will actually be a hand vote, since you just did an electronic vote, you can, it would override. So, this will be hand vote.
Okay, so, uh, all those in favor of Mr. Manival's motion, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Next will be Agenda Item Eight, which is the City Council Work Session, Eight A. This is a work session to discuss the potential development-
Vicki, I'm sorry, I think you may have skipped the budget one.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Hmm. Agenda Item Seven E. Discuss, consider, and take any necessary action regarding fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six proposed budget.
All right.
Okay, Mr. Kovacs.
I have a, I have a rapid presentation. Or we can do a longer one at your discretion. All right. If you can help me get rid of this part.
Yeah.
Budget, this is a, at every meeting, we like to talk about the budget. So, here we are again, on the fourth of August. Uh, we'll be back on the eleventh, and then on the eighteenth, we're looking for a budget adoption. Uh, just to recap, the, the strategic priorities the council set back during your strategic workshop, public safety, number one, fiscal resiliency and accountability, uh, promoting a sense of community, sustainable infrastructure and services, and service excellence and economic growth. All right, so, um, skipping a bit of the other, other information that you saw last week, and of course, we can go over it again if you like. Um, some updates, the, we did contact the MUDs, and, um, MUD One, we've always been tracking MUD One, we'd like to show this to you, everything. So, good news, um, MUD, MUD One, property tax cut. So, they were at nineteen point five cents, they're going down to fifteen point five. So, if you live, if you live in Wood Creek, MUD One, good news, it'll be a four cent tax cut coming your way, thanks to appreciating values within MUD One. Another good thing, usually we don't get good news during the budget process, we get bad news. But so far this year, we've been, we got some good news. So, with the tax base, um, coming in, and then with the, um, with some reductions in the amount that we think that we'd be using for benefits, um, thanks to the work of our, um, HR director and our broker, uh, getting a lower healthcare increase numbers, and then, um, some timing on the TMRS, um, implementation, we've got some additional funds. So, we've got about hundred and four, a hundred and forty-two thousand right now in, in additional funds. And so, we put together a little menu of what you could use those for. Now, this assumes that you continue to use the de minimis rate. Uh, the final tax rate came in, or the final proposed de minimis rate came in a little bit lower than we saw. So, there's about, uh, Omar and I worked it out and, and verified with Raju, it's about thirty-seven cents, uh, household less in the de minimis rate. But something, you know, it's a little bit of something. So, a little bit of good news. Uh, so if you decide to use the de minimis rate, we've got some additional, um, spending we could do. Uh, I did not mention, um, we didn't put on the list here, but Mr. Harper had mentioned, um, expanding to the, um, the, the retirees, the ones that have already retired, maybe including them. So, that cost was about forty-four to, between forty-four and fifty thousand dollars. So, that is another option here. Um, and I've also talked to Mayor Greenberg a little bit, um, today about, uh, potentially some, uh, extra video, um, capabilities and so forth. So, maybe boosting some of Shelby's, um, public relations, uh, ability to, to either do contracts or different little things or equipment. So, we've talked about that, hadn't had a chance to catch you that. But, but good news, the mayor thinks, he loves the video content, we- But, but good news, the mayor thinks, he loves the video content. We want to kind of, his idea, take it to the next level. And so that's potential use of some of those different funds. So we've got, um, probably the most odd thing here, so I'll just run, I'll run through them really quickly, and then you all, you all can decide if you want to tonight, or you can think about it. You don't have to have any action tonight. Uh, Stormwater Fund, we've got a lot of failing pipes in the older subdivisions, so 1990s subdivisions, a lot of corrugated pipes. So you've got a corrugated metal pipe under a concrete road, and the pipe fails, and now the road is failing. So we've had several of those, uh, that we've had to fix this year. Potentially, our, our transfer into the Stormwater Fund is inadequate. We don't have a stormwater fee, which is nice for residents, uh, but we do need to address some of these failing systems. Uh, we could increase foot road maintenance. Always a good place to spend money. Capital replacement for future roads. We could start transferring money into a special fund for saving up for roadway replacement. Sidewalk and trail construction, we're always getting requests for connecting different things in the city, so we can connect different parks. Implementation of the sidewalk and trail plan. Um, we could hire a couple extra people to work on parks and, uh, facilities and, um, additional mowing for rights away and potential trash collection, et cetera. Uh, we could always add a police officer, always popular to add police officers. Uh, firefighter potentially, and then some overtime and some part-time money for DPS. That would be tricky because we want to see how the safer grant goes before we necessarily would make a decision on that. Uh, but then we could also combine with some other cash funds. Uh, we've done this before. We've sent money to the utility fund, uh, to pay down this debt, which I'll talk about a little bit later down here. But, uh, we could reduce the MDD bond. So we're talking about MDD bond for the downtown parks, so we could cobble that together with some other funds, some park fee funds, and reduce the amount of money that, uh, we'd use for, uh, debt issuance to complete that park. And then there is a, um, we still owe the utility fund a little bit of money for some work that we did in 2017 and 2018 for some street work, so we could make some additional payments toward that. So some different ideas of how you might use, um, this money, uh, in the budget.
Can you explain Mr. Harper's point? Well, because you went through each of these, and that was great. What, what exactly were you mentioning with that?
He had mentioned at the last meeting that, um, we'd done the, when we were proposing the TMRS COLA, that we had excluded the, the people who had previously retired in order to reduce the cost. But if we included those people, uh, they would kind of get a little surprise addition. And you all saw the information I sent you out the, during this week about what that would look like. And so the cost is, uh, between 44 and $50,000 a year. So we did not put that in the list, but that's a possible use too.
Okay, thank you.
So some optional action tonight. Uh, you can direct any changes you'd like to the budget or discuss them. You don't have to act. You could, you can make any action you wanted to do. You can think about it and, uh, do it next week if you wish. Uh, of course, sooner is better because we have to change everything, and that's, that's always good for us to know how things are gonna end up. Uh, and then, of course, more, if you have questions, keep sending questions.
Okay, any considerations from council? Ms. Chin?
Yeah, um, so I liked, uh, Harper's proposal last week with the, is it COLA?
The TMRS COLA.
Okay, so, um, for extending that to people who had retired previously, but also I think that it's important, um, that we reduce the MDD bond and, um, you know, anytime we can pay down debt, I think that's a, a good use of extra money. Um, I, as far as I know, from what I've heard, we're fully staffed as far as police goes right now. I'm getting a thumbs up in the back. And then we're waiting to hear back on the grant situation with the firefighters. So, um, personally, I'd, I'd like to see those two things.
Mr. Harper.
I talked to Stephen before the meeting, but I, we had some folks in here before talking about the sidewalk system over by the new school and the danger of that. It sounds like that's been taken care of. That was, that was another thing that I had, uh, considered as a potential use for this is, are we sure we have the funds to complete that project? Who, who would know?
Scott, would, maybe Scott can come forward and talk about it. It's under, the construction's underway. I don't believe it's complete quite yet, but Scott can speak best to it.
We don't want dead kids.
Good evening. No, everything is in place. Uh, we already have the asphalt in place. We're putting road barriers up to kind of, kind of guardrail the, the kids as they're going to school. Uh, just have a little crosswalk striping, but we're on schedule to have it complete before school starts.
Okay, so, and we have the, the funds to complete that? Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
Scott, does that, does that include any signals as well?
It's two flashing signs. Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yep, so there'll be a crosswalk flashing signs at, at the crosswalk intersection on Rochelle. Not at Gettysburg because it's a, it's a stop intersection.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, other thoughts or discussions? Uh, Mr. Manaval.
I just had a question. I, I could have emailed this question in, but I wanted to just clarify the increase of .040368. How much of that is the DPS rate increase? It's a significant, I think it's a significant part of it, isn't it?
Are you talking about in the operational budget?
Well, we're showing right now.
Or you mean the bond, or both?
Yeah, how much is the tax increase for the bond? Because right now, we're showing in our, in the, the email that came with this agenda item, right now, we're at a de minimis rate for fiscal year 2025 of .259249. And then we're proposing to increase that by .0403. And I understand that increases, includes both the increase for the de minimis rate this year and the increase for the DPS. I just want to see the two pieces, just the two.
Let's see.
Just.
So the no, so I put this slide up here on the tax rate comparison, and these are updated numbers. So the only one that updated was the de minimis number there for fiscal year 26. So if you look at the no new revenue rate, .284410 compared to de minimis, .299617.
Okay, so the difference between those two numbers is the bond.
Right, so we have to move because the, the de minimis rate deals with the operating budget, so we have to move it.
That's not, that's not the bond. That, the difference between those two numbers is a penny and a half, which is the difference between the de minimis and the no new revenue. Everything from last year's tax rate, which was the 25 whatever, to the 28.4 is the DPS bond. Is that correct?
Did I, did I misunderstand the question then? Did I misunderstand your question, Mr. Manaval?
No, I just wanted to know if all we did was increase taxes for the DPS, which has been voter approved, what, what is that increase?
Oh, so that's the difference between the current rate.
How much of the taxes is due to, how much of the tax increase is due to the police bond, the DPS bond?
Down there on the, so the, the number down there on the bottom for the average home.
Well, I want the, just the rate.
Yeah, oh, the rate.
Yeah.
So the difference would be the difference between .28441
Okay.
And the current tax rate, .259245. Finance staff, make sure I got that right. Three cents?
Is it about?
About three cents. Three cents for the bond.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Hatley. I'm sorry, Mr. Manaval, was that, are you concluded? Okay, Mr. Hatley?
Michael, didn't we get, didn't you say we did better? Uh, we, the, the health insurance wasn't going to go up as dramatically as you thought it was?
No, no, that's part of the savings.
Okay, that is part of the savings.
Yes, yes, that's, that, that, that plus the TMRS number derived the, it's actually 144,000, and then we needed a couple extra thousand for the Rockwall County Emergency Service Corporation, so the net is 142.
Okay, are we still budgeting Justin Weiss's salary, uh, in this next budget? Is it still in there?
No, not in, not in the MDD budget.
But we saved it la, from last year.
Correct.
It went, it went unspent. Do we know?
Go ahead, Stephen.
And Matt can correct you. We're, we are, we do have a part-time employee helping to run the hub right now that's utilizing that fund.
Right.
That funding. As we were getting it up and running, John Middleton is our hub part-time employee.
Okay.
So that funding is coming as part of Justin's savings.
Okay. Uh, and I'm guessing since last time we spoke about it, the 500,000 for the, the lawsuit is still unspent. We're not likely to, to, to need that as well. I, I would like to propose we use, utilize that to get to the no new revenue rate. I think it's.
So, um, you could, rarely do we budget our carryover. I know we've got different financial thing, policies that say we have to have a balanced budget. Um, so the way we've done that in the past, and actually, um, it worked out pretty well, except once it didn't. When we didn't, when, when buildings stopped, it kind of didn't work out for us. But we've, we've estimated revenues higher. Uh, so one, one thing that cities can do is you can, you can estimate revenues higher, or you can estimate expenses lower. So there's a couple ways we can kind of get to that. But essentially, the effective is you're budgeting your carryover. So.
But it's not carryover from this fiscal year. It's carryover from a previous one.
Correct.
It's unused, it's sitting in a general fund.
Right.
Doing nothing.
Right, so the, so the best, so probably the best way to do that is to, uh, not make a transfer out of the budget in the current. And so then the 20, fiscal year 26, the best way to do that, if you were to try to get to the no new revenue rate, is not increase road maintenance. So there, right now, there's a, there's a flat, so what you do is you do a flat transfer in fiscal year 26. So there's 2 million, 2 million, one and a half, 2 million. So we'd keep it at 2 million, um, and not increase it. And therefore, and then what you do is you transfer in this year to fiscal, to complete the year, transfer money in. Sorry, Teresa's gonna say something. I thought it was a million and a half. Current, current funding's a year and a half, it's a million and a half. We spend 500,000 on local, uh, forces, but we have, uh, we spend a million and a half on contracts. So what you would do is, the most, so the most effective way to implement that with minimal damage is to, and it's a one-time kind of shot in the arm expense. So if it doesn't come in next year, you're not spending it on firefighters' salaries and all, of all other stuff that you have to kind of rely on.
I'm not sure why we would go after the, we go for the road increase when we have 500,000 that's sitting from a couple of budgets, you know, over a year ago.
See.
It, it, it's just general fund money. I realize it's, it's not encumbered anything. We can release it to anything, but the road money, we're gonna need. And I know a little bit later, people are gonna say, well, let's use the 500,000 for, for the road fund. But I, to me, you always, if you, if you need money for roads, you budget it. You put it in the budget. And anything you need that's gonna come in later, it should be in the budget. And you, we tax accordingly, uh, based off of that. If it's not in the budget right now, I mean, it's, apparently, it's not important until you start touching that general fund money.
Well, not necessarily. It's just we, we couldn't afford to get to the level that we're supposed to be at.
That we're supposed to be at. What's the level we're supposed to be at?
Scott, what's your best guess for road maintenance? I know we talked beforehand about, should I throw the number, should I throw a number, throw a number, was it 5 million that you're looking, 5, 5 and a half million is kind of what we should be probably close to every year on road maintenance? The road system is still in pretty good condition.
We've looked at lots of different proposals, different ideas and techniques, but, you know, eventually, we want to get to a level of about, about 5 million. But that would be in road replacement funds. Really, all we're doing is, is road maintenance. Our budget is not allocating to road replacement currently. So it's just road maintenance, trying to maintain the conditions, extend the life of the roads, so. But eventually, we're gonna get to that point where we have to do road replacements, and, and that's coming sooner than later.
And just one more question, Scott, before you walk off. Uh, so if we don't fund that now, we basically are putting that off onto our grandchildren and children, children to, in the future, millions and millions of dollars that they're going to have to, to take out bonds, and it's like saving for retirement when you're 55 years old. It isn't a good idea.
You know, one of the things that we've talked about is even, even from COVID times, is the fact that the money just doesn't go as far as it used to. So even at a million and a half, that, that's what I was accomplishing at a million just, just a few years ago. That's, that's how quickly those things changed, and those numbers, really, we didn't see declines in costs after, after everything subsided, so.
Yeah, when I came on the council, it was 1.5 million dollars a road mile, a lane mile. It's 3-point something a lane mile now.
We're about to go out for some, for some bids on some new roads, so we'll, we'll have some more accurate numbers coming soon, so.
Can I ask a question before you sit down?
Sure.
Um, how, I know that there are certain portions of Wood Creek that are gonna need not just maintenance, but replacing. Is that within the next 10 years, 20 years, 5 years? What are, what are we thinking, and how many roads are we talking about?
You know, looking at the number, you, you're probably are looking at close to a 10-year where we're gonna have to identify segments of, of the city. Probably would do it by a percentage of those areas. Um, some of the neighborhoods were built at different standards back in the day. So, um, we had some older areas even in Williamsburg that weren't built as the same standards that we have today. But we'll probably look at a percentage, so, um, kind of based on today's numbers, we could be looking at nine road miles
Okay, so nine miles of road, uh, you said 3.5? Is that like before you do the new road and figure it out and go out for bids?
And that's in today's numbers.
Right, so we're saying, I don't, I'm hairstylist, not a mathematician, but, um, that's a lot of millions, and, um,
27, 30 million.
Yeah, 27, 30 million dollars. And so, like, if we're just saving 1.5 from last year's budget, and we're pushing it to road maintenance, that's not even, at that, at that rate, it's gonna be hard to even take care of the cost.
And really, a lot of the work that we're doing now is really preventing the maintenance, trying, trying to extend the life of the roads.
Personally, I, I think it would be really irresponsible for us to, um, not consider that and to go with the no new revenue rate, which ends up being about $4 a month on average, when there's gonna be a $30 million bill that comes in a decade, and we're not gonna have an answer for that if we continue to, um, go with a lower tax rate. We don't want to set our city up to have bad roads. We all have to live here, and we want it to look nice, so.
I understand that, but I think we should have budgeted. Anything that we need for roads, we should budget.
How can you budget 30 million?
You can budget little bits at a time, but nobody.
That's what we're doing by doing the de minimis. We're able to take that one and a half, and we're able to put it towards, you know, future bills that are coming. I don't know how we would do that with the no new revenue. If you have a way to do that, I'd love to hear it, but I haven't heard that.
We're fully budgeted. We're not talking about cutting anything. We're giving everybody everything that they've asked for.
Well, well, and, and I don't want to give an argument on this. The, the issue I've got with the way, I, I understand what you're proposing. I would, I, I would love to find a way to get to the no new revenue rate. The, the way you're proposing to do it in the road fund i, is to pre-fund the account to an extra 500,000 to get it to the city's request of $2 million for next year. Um, the, the problem with that is next, that would put next year's budget instead of being $2 million at 1.5 million dollars. So we're not gonna be able to count on the surplus next year, so we've essentially maintained the road fund in budget as flat. So if we're going to continue to invest in roads in the sa, at the same velocity that we're doing now, in, in order to go from two, the 2 million in spending next year to 2.25, 2 and a half million, whatever the number is needed, that budget increase from next fiscal year to the following fiscal year, instead of the 25% that's being proposed today, becomes a 60 to 70% number because we're not increasing that budget. So, so we're, we're punting a decision, and a very difficult decision to future councils, by not putting it into the budget. So, so putting a 66% increase in bu, in, in any budget is problematic. It would be the same, it's the same thing as saying, instead of, we want to spend $300,000 on DPS, right? Um, and, and with the grant money. So i, if the grant money doesn't come through, we're spending $300,000 to hire firefighters. Why don't we just use the surplus for that money? The problem with that is the budget isn't in line to support that for the next year. So we've got overhead in place and committed to that we've got to find the money for. It, it's the same thing we're talking about with the roads. So either we're committing to invest in the infrastructure that we, we need in the budget, or we're committing future surpluses to it.
Well, it sounds to me like you're saying I'm talking about cutting anything. I'm not talking about cutting anything. I'm talking about taking $500,000 that's not attached to anything other than a lawsuit that's likely not to happen.
I, 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 I understand where your money's coming from.
That's not set for roads. That's not set aside for roads. I'm not taking any road money.
You're, you're taking budget surplus, is what you're taking.
Uh, from a fiscal year behind.
I understand. It's still surplus. It's, it's still a surplus in this budget.
It's, it's unspent money, uncommitted money.
Absolutely, but the problem, I would be okay with it if you say, let's take that 500,000, let's put that to roads, and still increase the budget amount from 1.5 to 2. The problem is what you're proposing is to use that budget surplus to buy down the tax rate. The problem, the problem I have is the way you're doing, i, i, it's, it's the way you're doing it. Because, because what happens is we pre-fund. because what happens is, we pre-fund that 500,000. There's got to be a budget adjustment to get down to the de minimis rate. The road budget, road maintenance budget stays flat. Spending next year will be higher, but the budget stays flat at 1.5. So, then what happens next budget cycle when, if we don't have a surplus, then we're underfunding budgets down the road.
Which I'm not counting on this upcoming, but we are projected to have another budget surplus.
This year, absolutely. This year, we're going to have, I'm not arguing about that. The point I'm trying to make is, it would be the same if you put it into salaries. If we're committed to investing in the infrastructure and taking care of our roads, we're going to have, Scott just said it, we're going to have to continue to increase that number by leaving the number flat in budget, which is what you're trying to do. You're trying to take surplus, put it into the funding, and then keep the budget number flat. That doesn't allow us to invest at the level we need to down the road.
Michael, were you going to use any of that 500,000? Is that counted in any of this money for the budget? Or is that just going to stay in the general fund? Was that the plan, to stay in the general fund?
Are you talking about the revenue and the fund balance?
The lawsuit, the lawsuit money.
Oh, so it's, so we have revenue and fund balance. So, we've got money in general fund fund balance, and then we've got money that we've transferred to other uses. So...
But that money is still unspent? It's still supposed to go, labeled to go to a lawsuit?
So, we have money in the fund balance from, let's say, last year's surplus and prior, maybe even prior year's surpluses. Most of the time, we transfer it to different funds. So, in this year, yes, I mean, it would not be part of the budget. It would be, essentially, we would have a, typically, we'll have a discussion item coming up. And as we get close to the end of the fiscal year, we'll say, hey, this is what we think the budget surplus is going to be. Here's some uses for the budget surplus. You know, we owe the utility fund some money, which could help knock down the sewer rate increase next year, perhaps, if we pay that off. We've got, you know, we could really put a dent in that future MDD bond by not issuing as much debt. So, we'll have a bunch of different ideas for you. One of them could be, transfer a bunch of money into the Stormwater Fund, transfer a bunch of money into the Road Maintenance Fund, set up an ongoing road replacement fund. So, there's some of the same things you saw in this list. We would have a proposal for you, but it's not part of the, necessarily, the part of the budget process.
Right, so we're not cutting roads or anything like that. We're not touching anything that you've asked for, essentially, if we transfer that 500,000 and put it towards this budget.
You're, well, we're budgeting carryover. I mean, it's a tech, I know you're thinking cash.
It's just depleting some of the general fund.
It's a semantic, but you're talking about cash and we're talking about budget.
Right.
So, they're two different things.
But you can do it. You can take 500,000 that we had in a previous surplus and pay, put it towards the next year's budget.
Let's ask our accounts. Is it, just, don't get into details, but is it, under the current financial policies, is it allowable to budget and use carryover? Could you have a line, because we've talked about this before, have like a, you have a line item in your budget that says, transfer from reserves 500,000, and then you expense it in whatever fashion.
That 500,000 from FY '24, we already transferred to the fire truck for 1.1 million dollars. That 1.1 million dollars include that 500,000 dollars.
Right.
We earmarked in FY '24. So, that 500,000 is not there anymore.
No, we used, out of 2 million, we used 50% of that to go towards the fire truck, 25% to go to roads. And the other 25%, roughly 500,000, went towards, to be earmarked towards a fund for a lawsuit.
So, what we did from the FY '24 surplus, 1.5, 1 million for the fire truck, we transferred. And we front-loaded the road maintenance, 1.5 million on get-go in the fiscal year FY '25.
So, 1.5 million went towards the road fund out of that?
Yes.
Even though it was earmarked to go towards a lawsuit?
Well, that was the budget. So, y'all are mixing fiscal years.
That is a surplus.
Y'all are mixing cash and fiscal years. But just a quick question. Using the current financial policies, can we budget carryover or is it a no-no to budget carryover? Because I've seen small towns do it, but...
No, we can't. It's not a balanced budget then. We cannot appropriate from previous one balance.
Is that a state law or...
No, that is not in our policy. We have to go back and change the policy.
Well, then we can change the policy.
Sure, you can change your policy. We could change our policy.
Okay, let me ask you a question real quick, just so I feel like I totally understand what the back and forth is. Because I felt like I was understanding, then I heard y'all's back and forth, and now I feel like I don't fully understand. So, would it kind of be like this? If I'm approaching the end of the year, and normally, every year, I budget $3,000 in my personal budget for auto repair. And at the end of, at the end of this year, I have an extra $3,000 of surplus money that I didn't spend on anything. I had my whole budget and I have 3,000 left over. The idea is, I say, hey, I don't have to budget 3,000 next year for auto repair. I'll just take the 3,000 I have right now and put it in to next year's auto repair budget. I fully fund that budget item, but I'm technically not allocating that money in the budget this year so that next year, if I don't have that surplus, then I am going to have to come up with 3,000 again because I didn't budget it, because I just said, hey, I don't have to spend it this time. Because, look, I have this extra money, but down the road, that would present a problem if I don't maintain a budget surplus.
That's right. That's right. Every time when you reduce...
All right. Good, good. I feel better. All right. So, who, go ahead, Raju, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, I'm okay. I don't want to confuse anymore.
Okay. Okay, so it sounds like, it sounds like what this comes down to is a decision that we have to make as a council on if we want to go that route, which is basically say, hey, we don't have to fully fund some things as a continuing item because we would have the money, so it would be funded, but we're not budgeting it at the normal level and then potentially risk, if we don't have a surplus the next year, us having to come and say, ooh, we don't have a surplus. And maybe it's next year, maybe whenever, we'd have to come back and say, hey, we're going to have to put this back in the budget now, and that could potentially bring some pain to the budget process. Okay, so, other thoughts? Okay. Do you need a, I mean, that was, obviously, somebody recommended no new revenue, and then some people spoke against it. Mr. Kovacs, do you need a direction at this point? Or are we good to go until the 11th when we discuss this again?
Now, you can take any action you wish to on the budget, or we can pick this up on the 11th again.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we will move on. What's our next item, please?
Okay, now, we will move to agenda item number 8A. This is a work session to discuss the potential development of Crenshaw Preserve. Discuss a proposed large lot, single-family development named Crenshaw Preserve, which includes 484 single-family homes, three Rockwell ISD school sites, and 168 acres of open space on 696.5 acres in northwestern Fayette.
Okay, thank you. Before we begin this, it's been recommended that we take a quick break. I'm sorry? Okay, so, how long do you want to, do you want to?
Five minutes.
Okay, so, we'll take a five-minute break? 10 minutes? You want 10 minutes? Okay. We'll take a quick 10-minute break and reconvene at, let's see, it's 8:45, we'll reconvene at 8:55.
Come back into our meeting. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'll bring it out. Okay. Now, we're ready for, actually, Madam Secretary, will you please repeat this agenda item just so we can come back and anybody who's watching and we'll watch later where we're at?
It would be my pleasure. Yes. Agenda item 8A, this is a work session to discuss the potential development of Crenshaw Preserve. Discuss a proposed large lot, single-family development named Crenshaw Preserve, which includes 484 single-family homes, three Rockwall ISD school sites, and 168 acres of open space on 696.5 acres in Northwestern Fate.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm just going to give a brief introduction and hand it over to the development team. I want to thank them for their perseverance in making it through the other agenda items here. So, we don't very often do work sessions, and the reason that we have decided to present this to you as a work session, and just to be very clear, a work session is not a venue where any decisions are made. This is basically an opportunity to be introduced to a concept, introduced to the vision that these folks have for a significant amount of property in Fate, and allow just preliminary questions and answers, feedback as you see fit, but again, this is not a public hearing, this is not the proper state of the stage of the process to be making any deliberation or making any indication of your position on things. We simply just want to inform, and so that's what this work session is about. This property is almost 700 acres in size. 640 acres is a square mile, so we're talking about around 1/13th, or 1/12th, excuse me, of the entirety of what is currently within the Fate municipal boundary. And given that's a significant land base, we wanted to make sure that we had this a productive conversation at this point, which may or may not, you know, translate into a future zoning process. So with that, I'd like to invite Ryan Joyce up here to go through a couple of slides. I have a couple of follow-up slides immediately after that, and then we'll open up the floor to the Q and A, okay?
Perfect, thank you, and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Ryan Joyce, 767 Justin Road, Rockwall, Texas, 75087. Michael Joyce Properties is a small family development company. My wife and I run it. We live in Rockwall. Our kids go to school here. Our office is here in Rockwall. All of our employees, except for one, live here in Rockwall County as well, and so we are your neighbors. A lot of people say that I probably live a driver and a nine iron from the city limits of Fate. By the way, I play golf, it's probably driver, 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 maybe a two iron and then a putter, so. But we live here in this community, a lot of the organizations that you heard from earlier, those are organizations we support, not only with our time, but also with our dollars, and so my wife and I are heavily invested in the schools here in this community, and so, you know, and the reason I tell you all this is, you know, we are not a big corporate company that's coming here and trying to develop something in the city of Fate. We're developing this in our backyard. As you heard, this is a very large project. Here in Little Wall, you hear from Brett Pettigo, who is our partner in this deal with Terra Manor Land Development, and they have been a great partner of ours. This will be our third project to work on with them, and we're excited to bring this to them and excited to have them as part of our development team. So, just a little bit about the property, and guys, this is a work session, we are here to get your feedback. If you have questions, please feel free to ask them, but we want your feedback. We've spent a lot of time, effort, and resources pulling together what we think is a very unique opportunity for the city of Fate, and so we are eager to hear what you guys think about that, and so we welcome any questions or feedback throughout the duration of the presentation. The property is highlighted here in this little red area, it's two, actually, three separate pieces of property, one on the north side of FM 552, one on the south side of FM 552, and then we've actually been working with the school district. The school district owns this blue Tetris piece there in the middle, so we've been working with the school district to help integrate their school sites into this particular development. As we take a look at any new piece of property, we pull up trail plans, we pull up proposed park plans, we pull up what's around the particular property and kind of take a look at how is the city growing, how's the municipality growing, where is the growth happening and what direction is it going? So, this particular exhibit here, again, shows you the property, but kind of your little green dobs are parks and green space that are proposed through the City of Fate Master Parks Plan. Your dotted lines are future trails, and you can see we have a number of trails that run through this particular development, and those are all things that we will be incorporating into our proposal. The next thing we can do is kind of take a look at the topography of the property, and so what we've done here, if you look at this previous, so north is facing straight up, but as we look at this slide here, in order to give you a good grasp, we've actually rotated this counterclockwise 90 degrees, so north is going to be to the left of your screen. You can see the white lines on here, those are thoroughfares, and so the one that runs right down the middle is going to go all the way down to Interstate, the Interstate 30 frontage road, and tie in through the Montero development, and then as it runs further south, so that goes all the way to the south. Up on there on the top of your page, that's a future connection to Prince Lane, which will provide a major east-west corridor connection, and then that connection actually goes down as part of North Country and eventually ties into FM 3549. So, providing both north-south and east-west connectivity, or the future ability for connectivity through this particular piece of property. You can see the topo here, we've got two different lakes that are associated with this property. Crenshaw Lake, which is our namesake, is located on the north side of FM 552, and then our southern boundary there runs right through the middle of Burnett Lake, there on the south So, as we look at the topo, then we kind of say, hey, what do the actual slopes look like? Where are the areas to kind of stay away from? And you can see, we've got some areas that have very gradual fall to them, and then there's some areas that are pretty, a lot more steep in their fall as you get down closer to the lake, so we try to stay away from those areas, but this just kind of shows you our thought process, how we go through and analyze the particular piece of property that we're looking at today. Flood plan is always a big concern, staying away from the flood plan, but really understanding where it goes, what the natural riparian corridors are through the property, and so we want to be cognitive of those, and really be mindful of how we set this development up in relation to what those corridors are, and so we've highlighted those. Of course, the kind of the main features of those areas are the lakes, but you can kind of see the floodways and the floodplain areas, as well as some existing creeks that are on the property also. View corridors, this is really big, especially for the type of product that we're going to propose here, and you'll see that here in just a little bit, but what are you going to be looking at from your actual home as you look out your front porch, as you sit on your back patio? What are you going to see? Where are you looking at? And so we try to identify areas that offer really good views for future homeowners, and especially at the price point that we're talking about, we really want to be cognitive of what those view corridors are like and what you're actually looking at. You actually see also on the slide too, the existing vegetation is highlighted here in green, so you can kind of see how particular homes would look out over that open space as they're, whether they're facing towards the front of it or they're facing towards the rear of it, but really giving you a good perspective on what future views of these residences will be. So, once we kind of get an overall grasp and look at what the property is, we then kind of go into our design and vision of what we want the property to be and how we want to mold that, and so I'd like to invite Brett up at this time and kind of hand this over to him and let him kind of walk through a little bit about our design process.
Make sure I know how to work this. Yep, I got it, all right. Good evening, my name's Brett Pettigo with Terra Manor Development. We're a Dallas-based development firm, 4416 West Lover's Lane in Dallas, 75209. I'm here tonight with Ryan and then my partner Bobby and Michael, who is our project manager and construction manager, but we just wanted to make sure, to give you a little idea of how we approach these things. Ryan kind of focused on the front end of all the, just the site characteristics and everything, but what we, over the years, and just, you know, between Bobby and myself, we're, you know, probably 70 to 75 years of development of these types of projects, so at least 30 years between each one of us, so we've been doing this a long time. We've seen how some people do it and how some others have done it, and we've really molded that into a way that we just like to do very distinctive neighborhoods. So, if you were to go to our website, terramanor.com, you will see some of our neighborhoods, and I think, you know, the best compliment we get is a lot of times when people drive through our neighborhoods, they're like, I don't know what's different, I can't put my finger on it, but it just feels different, and that's a great compliment to us whenever we feel like we've created this space where people call it home, raise their families, but it's something just a little different. So we're hoping as we show you this tonight, you'll see that this is something different that you haven't seen within your city, and just to kind of bring you through that design vision and how we look at things, we kind of look at the region of where we're starting, we look at, you know, the natural aspects of what we've got going on around us, and then how do we build both of those together into a community? So some of these slides that we're going to show you are going to be, it's always confusing, everybody's like, are you going to go build that? And we're like, no, we're going to go use that as the inspiration to go build into our neighborhoods in the right locations, in the right design areas. So whenever I show you some of these pictures, I'll kind of point out some of the things that we look at from this picture. I kind of liken it to my wife's Pinterest when she's coming up with a project, she's got all this stuff, and she's like, if I just put all this together, then I can get the vision of what I want to go do, because that's what we do with land. So, as we go through, I'll, you know, we look at the region, the area, so our design firm that we use a lot is Mesa Design for this, they'll go in and research a lot of the heritage and things that have happened within your city leading up to this, because there may be some elements of that that we want to pull out and preserve and put that into our development. Sometimes there's great things in there, sometimes there's not, but we want to look at it, we want to put it in. For this particular case, there's a family name that we've kind of brought out, the two lakes that are out there, Crenshaw Burnett and Crenshaw Lake, we felt like we can pull that into our naming, so that's kind of how we've got to that point, but we're looking at some of the history, looking at some of the architecture, we may pull some of these elements of architecture into some of the buildings or amenity nodes that we put in, so we're looking at all of that as we go, and then we start putting that into these architectural forms, the materials, the landscape, how we put that all together, you know, so these pictures, if you look at them, you know, this building that's got this beautiful archway, we love that shape, we love that because it fits in with some of the architecture that you've seen in some of the older buildings and things that have been done around this region. We see the streams and how that natural corridor, we've got some great areas where we have this, these natural streams coming through our property, and we really want to kind of preserve that, keep that natural. Maybe we can bring trails in close to that, but we still want the grasses, we want all of that to remain very natural with our design. And so as we keep moving through, we start looking at, okay, if we're going to build these buildings, how do we bring this architecture in? These are some shapes, materials, things like that, that we would bring into the design of our buildings. So, in this particular neighborhood, we're still working through the programming of what we would put in the open spaces, but I can imagine we will have gathering areas, so it may be a pavilion where someone can reserve that from the neighborhood to have a party or host a party, or, you know, and you see in some neighborhoods where they may have a pool. I don't think we'll have a pool because at the price point and the size of the lots that we have, everybody will probably have their own pool, the pool site wouldn't be used, but we can still program a gathering area that's very responsive to what their needs are, and how they want to entertain, how they want to relax, and build those elements in. So these buildings that we see here would be the architecture that we would be going for, for those buildings. The grasses, again, the natural areas, and I hope whenever you see this as we work through it, it's just very natural elements. We're not trying to go build some monument that looks, you know, square and looks like all the other monuments you see. We really feel like as we've studied the land, that we really want it to be free-flowing landforms, and it looks all natural built, so some of the table rock that you see in the bottom right of your screen there, we might have some outcroppings of that. We may have to go buy the rock somewhere else and bring it in, because we have a lot of Black Lake Prairie here, but we're going to build that into some berms and shapes within the development so that we get that look. So that's, whenever we're looking at these elements, so I just hope you can see that as we move through this, but these are some of the pictures of the grasses. We've got a great opportunity with the boulevard that comes through the middle of our development, and one thing we want to do is whenever you drive into that neighborhood on the south end of the neighborhood, and you leave it, you're going to know you're leaving it because it feels different, and you're going to see these brandings, these monikers, these things that, you know, the, just the design itself, well, that boulevard's a beautiful boulevard that we can do a lot of beautiful things in it. We've, instead of just building the same straight roadway that's typically on your master plan, where you have both the roads going in a straight median, we want to wind that median around, we may even change the elevation of one side of the road to the other, so that you've got just a variation of elevation as you're driving. So, people coming down the road this way may be over here at a higher elevation, whereas people down here are at a lower, but when they get to the intersections, everything meets back up and it looks like a normal intersection. But while you're driving those, it just feels unique, it feels open, and we use these grasses in some of these areas to kind of drive that element home through our design. The amenities and programming, so we may have gathering areas like where we just have some chairs, it may be a fire pit, it may be just a place where a family wants to go on a little picnic in the open space areas. We've got 168 acres of open space within this development, there's plenty of room that we can program in, places for people to go in these trails and open spaces. We believe that our number one amenity will be the open space and the trails. You know, the programming that I mentioned before, we've got two Great Lakes on the property, so how do we encourage fishing? How do we encourage our neighborhood to be able to go and enjoy those? We're not probably going to build a playground that looks like a plastic playground that you see a lot of times, we may build that out of natural elements, so like the playground that you see in the top left is more of a natural setting in some of our open spaces. We'll still have playground equipment, but we're going to try to bring our design into something that looks a little bit more natural and uses some of the earth elements in those. We'll probably encourage kayaking, we won't have it where people can rent a kayak and go out on the lake, but if a resident has it and wants to use it, they can. So the site that we were looking at before, as Ryan was showing you, you've got this, the ISD land that's in the middle, so we looked at it and we're like, well, you know, what we see a lot of times is schools buy a large piece of land, and then they're confined to go build everything they need on that one piece of land. That all works pretty good until you get like three schools all in one site, and you're trying to get the elementary school and the middle school, all this, and everybody's trying to get in and out of that. So, we talked to the school district, we're like, hey, what if we could partner with you, and you don't have to stay in the same boundary that you're with, but we can scatter these sites and plant them just like we would have if we were all doing this from scratch? Instead of y'all staying in your little square, we'll stay in our square, let's work together, build the roads, build the infrastructure the right way, and plant these in the right location. So, that's been our goal so far, and I think what you're going to see is it's really worked out very, very well with our planning. This orientation throws me off every time. I know north is to your left, really, but north is up on the map, so on the south end where the lake is, is kind of the, if y'all were to envision where Montero kind of stops, there's a lake at the north end of Montero, this would be where we're starting, and that, you know, our main collector road is your major thoroughfare, as Ryan said, that goes to the south, but what we decided to do is integrate all these things in, but you'll see that the schools are spread out. Typically, your elementary school, we try to pull that into the neighborhood a little bit more, so it wasn't on 552, but the middle school's a good location to have on 552 at that intersection. We, you know, we wrapped everything with Collector Road, so like you've got plenty of, you know, room for cars to maybe park or queue for lines and still have traffic flow going through it, so we planned all of these roadways around that. You know, this particular lot scheme that we put on this is, you know, to try to meet with the rural standards and the rural neighborhood that you're wanting to achieve on this part of town, we, these are like anywhere from three-quarter acre to an acre to a little over acre in that range, so just giving you guys an idea of what you're looking at. So just, just giving you guys an idea of what you're looking at, um, and that's how you generate to this, to this density that we're showing here. But this is when we start putting all of those textures, all those elements into it. And this is kind of hard for you to see, but this would be the main boulevard, boulevard, which would be a very high design of, of landscaping that would meet to the natural element. The one thing we don't want to do, especially with this low a density as we have in this development, is create some kind of a burden on the HOA. But we would anticipate, even though this is a thoroughfare, that our HOA is going to be maintaining this, this entire landscape element here. So our design's very crucial to make sure we get all those grasses. We get all of the trees and everything planted and we can keep them alive without having to generate a whole lot of water usage on that. So that's where our landscape architects really thrive. They can find those grasses, they can find those design elements so that we get that natural beauty all the way down this boulevard. There'll still be some irrigation needs, but our goal would be to minimize that as much, and kind of fade into the natural grasses that we have out there today, that are growing today. So this, this boulevard section, you would see elements all the way along it. So they kind of put together a, a map to show you this, and this map's a little bit confusing too, but it's, um, if you could think about the profile at the top being the median of this roadway as you're driving from south on the right to, to north on the left. And so there's, there's a, a large ravine area there on the south, basically where that floodplain cuts through, but they would use that as an element along that roadway to create an icon. So you would see some element that would be announcing that, hey, you're entering into Crenshaw Preserve. As you move up the road, you, you get to different intersections, you're going to see those reminders. They may be in a little bit smaller form or a bigger form. It may be a big rock outcropping if it's an area that we really want to highlight and it, and a, a smaller area may get a smaller, but they would all match and you would feel like they, they fit into the overall design. So this is just showing you kind of that, uh, the context of how the elevation goes up and down too. They exaggerated it so you would see it, but we've got about 40 foot of fall from different aspects of getting to the high point to the low points in some of these properties. So, um, we can really use that and carve into that and use that land and not have to, not have to change a lot just because it's beautiful land as it sits today. So this would give you an example of one of those outcroppings of rock. So envision some of those images that we saw earlier where you have that shelfy rock with, with some grass elements growing out of it. So it looks very natural. It looks like it may have been here 100 years ago and we just kind of uncovered it and, and put it out there. But that would be if, at the end of the, of our design for it to look like it, it was, it's been there a long time. The, the wording of this Crenshaw Preserve, we put a moniker there just so you could see it. That's probably not what we would end up with. That's something that we didn't feel like fit with how, um, the design looked, but we would end up creating maybe something where we turned one of those table rocks up on, on end and use that for our signage. I'll show you some examples we've done in some of our other neighborhoods as we move through, but like this would be a smaller entry element where again, you're going to get those same feelings of the design, um, but you're just, it's just a smaller, more intimate setting. And even a tertiary or smaller element. It's, this may be like at a, a, one of the, the main entries that you go home in every day, but you tell your friends to go through the big, big entry, right? So this would be just another reminder of the, of the element. If you look in the top right, this is a development we did in Argyle, um, and it's called Waterbrook, but it's that same big table stone that we turned up on end and used the ledgie rock. And again, I think, um, we were very happy with the way it came out. It looks, um, it's beautiful with the landscaping, everything in front of it. Canyon Falls is another one of our developments near Flower Mound. And, and the one thing I was going to say too is scale on these projects are, are really, really important. Some of these entry features, they look really small on these, this piece of paper, but these are huge entry features. So like the lettering on the Canyon Falls there is probably like five feet high. And some of these urns, the big metal urns that you see are probably six to seven feet high. I mean, these are big elements, but because it's big open spaces, right? It's not like we're trying to cram it into a small entry feature. We're, we're spreading this out across, uh, some large areas. But this natural setting, I think all of these pictures would show this feeling of a natural setting more than man-made structures that we're just kind of building a brick element or something like that out of it. So that's what we would hope we would get. This slab outcropping, um, is not one of our projects, but one, our Mesa designed this for a ranch out west and we loved it and we were like, yes, this is kind of what we wanted to look like. Everybody always asks like, what are the houses going to look like? We, we talked to some of our building partners, um, that we, that build in our neighborhoods. They know the price point of this particular neighborhood is going to be a higher price point and they know the product that they would, they would build in it. These are not the builders that I'm going to tell you are going to be in that, but this would be a very good sample of what I think you would see from the product that we're building. These, these lots are bigger lots, um, you know, close to an acre lot and these houses have to, to feel that same presence. They have to spread out and be larger. A lot of, you know, opportunity for some one stories, um, not just two stories because we got the bigger lot that they can spread out on. And then I just thought we would try to give you a, an idea of the difference. Whenever you look at 600 acres like we have here in our development and we put these streets and lots in it, you're like, this looks just like every other development. But it's just so large and such a large area, you lose sight of how big these lots are. So we just wanted to give you a sample. This was taking the same size sample area out of a neighboring development that's a high density development and then letting you see that same area, what it would look like in our development. And it's, it kind of tells a lot of the story of how big these lots are and that you haven't seen these type of lots like this. So that's all this development was. This, this slide was just trying to keep everybody in perspective, the scale of what 600 acres looks like. And, and even though 484 is a lot of lots, it's 484 on 680 acres. So it's, it's a little bit different feeling. And I think, um, you want, you want to start, you want to go over to the timeline or do you want me to do that?
Oh, it doesn't, we're, we're good. So, uh,
I'll let, I'll let Ryan take it over here.
You heard Brett talk about, you know, 400, uh, 480 plus houses and your immediate thought is that's a lot of houses, right? Well, it's not 480 houses tomorrow. We don't have these things staged up over at DFW Airport and we're going to helicopter them over and just drop them in. So we just wanted to kind of give you all a little bit of a timeline. This is a very large piece of, of property. Uh, you know, we're, we're looking at doing smaller phases, so our phases would probably only be about 70 to 85 homes at a time. So we're not trying to, to flood the market with a bunch of, uh, large lots from day one. But you can kind of see here, you know, where we're at today, uh, potentially we have some zoning approval here by the end of the year, which allows us to break ground in the middle of next year. You know, first phase, again, smaller phases. So you're talking about maybe 75 or, or 80 home sites, uh, which your first homeowners would be moving in sometime, uh, around the middle of 2028. As we kind of look out a little bit further, that first phase will probably be completely built out sometime around, um, uh, the beginning of 2030. And then as we kind of, kind of project that out long range and long term, you're, you're probably talking about a full build out somewhere, uh, 2038 to 2040. So really a, a, a very long 12 to 15 year project that we're talking about, um, through, throughout the course of, of all this construction. So it, it's not big phases, it's not 250 lots on the ground at a single time. I mean, given the sheer size and the price point of where these homes are going to be at, it's something that we have to take bite sized chunks at along the way in order to not flood the market with this particular product. With that, uh, that concludes our presentation. We would love to hear from you guys, uh, love to hear any questions that you have as we move forward in this process. And I see eager, eager hands going towards light, so more than happy to answer your questions. And thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you for being here. Uh, any, do you want to do your presentation first and then we'll ask questions or do you?
I, I think just to give it proper context, I just have a couple of quick slides.
Please.
Um, just, just to kind of round things out and let you know, we've been taking a look at this as well. So based on the presentation and data that, um, that Ryan and team provided to us, we did run a very preliminary land use compatibility. We wanted to give you a sense of if they came with, at this, with this tomorrow, how would we be looking at it as staff as far as evaluating the compatibility with our current plans? So what we did, we looked at the various criteria on, on a very high level of, um, of this project against our comprehensive plan, our zoning code. And again, this is very preliminary, it's based on the preliminary information that was provided, so please don't take this as gospel, but still it's just, um, a, a point in time evaluation. So we looked at the, the future land use plan currently, that area is all rural reserve. What they are proposing would not require necessarily a change in that future land use plan designation. And that's because, uh, compatible zoning for the rural reserve is residential estate. That's one acre minimum lot size and a maximum density of one acre, one dwelling unit per acre. Given that, as they indicated, they actually would be coming in with lots that would be a little bit le- less than one acre in some cases, uh, .75 acres plus, uh, that would require them to submit a planned development for the 700 acres to allow for that reduced lo- specific lot size. However, the density overall would be still maintaining a net density of one dwelling unit per acre, which is compatible with the residential estate and the rural reserve. So, um, that's, I think where they find, they maintain that compatibility even if they didn't have a one acre minimum lot size. Open space requirements, uh, this has 168 acres of open space. If this were a typical suburban residential development with 484 units, uh, we would require 1.45 acres of dedicated park, uh, to serve those, those residences. So they certainly have a surplus of open space that they'd be able to program and would likely meet that park dedication requirement. Finally, the Master Thoroughfare Plan does show, uh, Ben Payne, uh, Prince and Country Lane extensions. This is from the Master Thoroughfare Plan that was adopted. As you saw in their presentation, they would facilitate the extension of Ben Payne up past, uh, 552 as well as eastward and westward connections of, uh, of Canyon and, um, and Prince Lane, um, to, to serve the school sites as well as connect the, the neighborhood to the, uh, larger system. And again, based on very preliminary data, we did run a fiscal analysis just to understand kind of what some of those implications could be. The net value per acre based on a $1.1 million average house price is about $685,000 per acre. Uh, revenue to cost ratio would range from .73 to .89 to 1. Again, a one to one is a basically a balanced, uh, revenue to cost for a project. As a comparison, uh, recent R2, uh, residential development, uh, and analysis showed that that would be about 1.56 to 1. So the general trend, and again, this is just for information and context, it's not something that we base any approval recommendations or denial recommendations on. General trend is when you have larger lots, the revenue to cost ratio tends to be lower. That's just the nature of, of the development, the relationship of the private, uh, value versus the public infrastructure that's necessary to serve that, to serve that private development. Uh, the private to public ratio in this case would be about 9.6 to 1. Uh, 20 to 1 is considered a balanced project, uh, but again, larger lot residential development tends to, to skew on this, on the lower side for the private to public ratio, even with higher value homes. And if we took all the property taxes collected from this project that build out, it would take us about 53 years to repay the, the roadway infrastructure that would be needed to, to serve it. So what this does however, it does align with the, some of the assumptions from the comp plan that look at that rural reserve, that there's going to be basically less dense development. And what we're trying to do, trying to do with the comprehensive plan is to offset areas of less dense development with higher intensity of development with projects like Lafayette Crossing, like Fate Village, that generates more revenue than it demands of us. And that kind of helps offset some of the, the, the less dense, uh, uh, potentially higher value, uh, per unit project, but over a larger landscape. So I just wanted to share that information just for context. Again, we, we're not, we're not looking for any, any decisions tonight, but it's important for us to continue to educate our decision makers on the fiscal outputs from development of various types. So I'll leave it at that and allow you to, uh, open the, uh, the floor for questions, both for myself as well as, uh, for the development team. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Mr. Kelly?
Um, yeah, great presentation. Um, I've, in fact, it's been a while since I think I've seen you in these chambers. I think the last time you were here, you were probably complaining about something near one of your other developments, but that's okay.
We, we, we were talking about some, uh, lot industrial property there on 354.
Something like that, I don't remember. But, um, I, I, I've seen several of your other developments around the county and you've got a track record of putting phenomenal developments, um, in place. So I, when I saw this first on the agenda, I was excited to look at it and, um, excited that you, um, are considering this. First off, I, I, I think with the way it fits with the comp plan, I think it really reinforces what the comp plan is, wants to do as far as maintaining lower density in the northern part of the city and really helps us hold other folks to the fire on any other, um, stuff that might want to be considered up there. So I think this is a, a, a really intriguing proposal. With the size of these lots, are you, are, are we talking about septic or are we talking about working with the school district or running full sewer and wastewater up there? Any thoughts on that yet?
Uh, so we are talking about potentially utilizing, well, we are talking about utilizing septic on all the residential home sites. Uh, the school district obviously can't operate under, under septic. So we're, we're working with them to find a, an engineering solution that we can facilitate both of the school sites being serviced by sewer, whether that's a small private lift station or, or that, that's what it would take is some sort of private lift station to service the schools. When, when you start to end or decrease the density, uh, it really makes sewer very difficult to, to do, especially on, on this size of a product. The state mandate for, for, uh, for septic use is actually on, on anything greater than a half acre lot. You know, we've seen systems now that, uh, it's actually a combination between, uh, a traditional septic system where you have a leach field and then also, um, uh, aerobic system, uh, combines those two systems together, which, uh, provides a low dosage drip in, into the, into the, into the dirt and it reduces the overall drain field that you have to have per home to right around 3,500 to 4,000 square feet. Uh, so it's, they're, they're very efficient systems. Uh, we actually have, so Northgate is a neighborhood that we did right, right across the street. We actually have one of our homeowners in Northgate that they installed their leach field in their front yard and I'm kicking myself for not doing the same thing or, or requiring that because they have the greenest grass in, in the entire neighborhood. So, uh, these systems have gotten really great, really efficient, super efficient. Um, and, and so that's what we are planning on utilizing.
And, um, the only, the only thing I would ask staff in consideration on this is, I, I love the PD, um, zoning on it. Really just because of the timeframe of build out, all, all I ask is that PD be really, really dialed in as, as far as what we're talking about today so that, you know, we don't know what the world's going to look like in, in, in 20 years or where you're going to be at or whatnot. So, so just really want to make sure that's dialed in. But, um, my, my initial feedback off this is I think it's a, a phenomenal opportunity for, for the city.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I've got a question.
Mine's not all that technical, but, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, Ms. Huffman, then Will.
So your public areas as planned look very beautiful. Would, would they be available to people outside of that housing development? Is it gated?
So we, we're not planning to gate, uh, anything within the development. Brett, I'll let you kind of speak how y'all have done that.
Yeah, typically, what we'll do is we'll find areas that are, um, like a, a corridor that needs to connect within the, the city, one trail system to the other. And we'll let that trail system be a public, so people get to enjoy walking through the open space and everything else, um, along that trail corridor. They may not get access to all of them and they may choose, a lot, a lot of times people choose to just go for a run and they, they get on there and nobody really ever knows. But we will make some of them public access easements around those so that the But we will make some of them public access easements around those so that the public does get to use them. If it's, you know, our, our private areas that our residents are paying with their HOA dues on maintenance of, you know, a, a building or a, you know, sitting area or something like that, that usually has trash pickup and things like that that are associated costs for our residents, those wouldn't be available. Those would be private and just used by the neighborhood. But like a trail system is kind of hard to say, we need to connect, especially with students maybe coming from different developments, coming through our development, we want them to use those corridors to walk to school and not necessarily feel like you've got to walk away around our neighborhood to get to the school. So I mean, our, we, we want to have that in, in our development. So there'll be a little bit of both.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I would, I would echo the concern about the, the PD, just make sure that we, you know, what we, what we say we're going to get, we get, because this is a very long project and we don't, we don't want this thing, unfortunately, if it, something happens in the middle of it, we don't want somebody to come in and say, oh, well, we got this approved, we're going to just put another 2,000 houses here because we were approved to do so. So I would want some sort of an assurance that even if you guys pulled out, that they would have to come back to council for, for approval to any changes to what you guys would propose.
No, absolutely.
What is the, if you know, what is the ratio from your .75 acres to anything an acre and over? Do we know what the breakdown of that works out to be with your proposal amount of houses?
We, we don't have the exact square footages on every single lot. You're, you're somewhere in the neighborhood of about 70% to 75% of the lots are, are going to be three quarter acre and above, and then the balance is going to be over an acre or an acre plus. So about, about 70% between three quarter and one acre. And one of the things that we tried to do in, in doing that and why you do have some, you see how curved linear these streets are and, you know, by, by doing that, as you drive down the road, you're never really looking at more than four or five houses at a time as you round those corners. So it just makes it feel so much more open and it gives you some oblong shaped lots where you do get upwards of 1.8 to 1.9 acres. But just given the sheer amount of infrastructure that's going on, the extension of Ben Payne from Montero all the way up to 552 and then north from that, as well as the east-west major thoroughfares and spreading those out, it, it, all that costs money and so we have to figure out how to pay for it somehow.
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's one of the things about our design is with the curvy line of, with taking more space around the open space areas to preserve that, that we end up back at the same density. So I think your ordinances and your guidelines are kind of set up so this property could have been a square field with, with zero character to it and somebody would go, okay, let's just do one acre minimums on that. Well, because we've got the character of the land that we're trying to design into, then yeah, we, we made the lots in some cases a little bit smaller to make sure we could fit it and make it all work, so.
Thank you for that comment because that actually makes sense to me.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Kovač.
The question I've been dying to ask is, do you?
Oh, no, no, city council only, Mr. No.
We've had lots of talks at Chamber, I don't know how many times, we've always been visiting, we're always, we're trying to figure kind of how do you make fate? How do you make the north of fate work? And this is, this is pretty close. So compliments on that. Are you asking for a PID?
So at, at this time, our goal is to, is to not incorporate that. We haven't gotten all the way through everything we need, so we're trying to leave all of our options open for when we come back to you for our final presentation, but we, we haven't quite got there yet. So we, we spent a lot of time and resources getting to where we're at now. We said, hey, before we go any further, let's go talk and, and that's why we're here for the work session, is just to get some of your initial feedback, so.
Right, because as you get into your infrastructure costs, the horrifying numbers start to come out and then you're like, ah, can I build it into the lots? Do I need a PID?
Correct.
Is there any way that we've looked, and I know we haven't worked with, we've got some preliminary, is there any way to reduce infrastructure liability? Because once you build it and turn it over to us, then it's ours.
So I, I think there's a, a couple of things there. One, there, there's no, so we are going with septic, so there's no sewer infrastructure that the city will be responsible for maintaining, which, which is a pretty good chunk, chunk of infrastructure. You know, from, from a roadway infrastructure impact, given the, the size of the lots and the density, you're talking about a lot less traffic that are on those, those secondary roads. So you're not having, you know, it's not like other areas that are developed that have three and four and five units per acre. You know, those particular homes have, have upwards of 15 to 20 cars per acre driving down those roads. Well, we have one unit per acre, so maybe we have two. So a lot less usage and wear and tear on that infrastructure is going to be beneficial to the city in the long run and maybe prolong that actual replacement cost.
So perhaps even as we're looking at the thoroughfare plan, as we've done this in other developments where the, the road, it may show four lanes, but you look at it and you look at what's going on around it and we reevaluate it and say, you know, we could do it with two, that reduces your costs. You've already got it at two, good. And then different little things like eliminating, you know, maybe there's a way to eliminate sections of road that, especially as you go north on 552 there. So there may be some ways that, that we can work with you guys to minimize your infrastructure, use more green. You've got a ton of green infrastructure already, so you don't have a lot of gray stormwater stuff running everywhere, so that's great.
Well, and, and one of our other, and not that this is infrastructure related, but you know, as Brett spoke to utilizing natural grasses, utilizing natural vegetation, native vegetation that is very drought tolerant. I mean, it, it helps reduce the overall water usage within the development, so that, that's our main goal. And when you look at North Texas Municipal Water District website, 50% of their water for future use comes from conservation and it's right there on their front page. How are we going to service DFW, the metroplex in the next 50 years? Well, 50% of that comes from conservation. And typically 80 to 90% of the water that comes out of North Texas goes right back into, into, to grass and trees and, and landscaping. So that, that's a huge burden on the overall infrastructure and so we're trying, trying to reduce that as well.
One more, the, the property on the Royce, or the Roy City, the, we love Roy City ISD. We love Rockwell too.
Yeah.
It's just different. Rockwell ISD property on the, oh, no, no, you're good. Back to the, yeah, the perimeter property, they had, they had some carve out, so they had this, you guys were working with the school district, which is fantastic. So you got this elementary school, walkable, super cool.
Yeah.
Got the, the middle school, more kids coming from all different places. Did they, have you guys indicated like, are they, is Royce or Rockwell ISD going to do a commercial, is that like a commercial strip or do they have like, is that bus barn sort of activities or?
You're talking about on 3549?
Stuff on 3549, yeah, right on 3549.
They haven't identified what their future use of that property was. This particular property was, is owned by a gentleman who, who owned a lot of property in this area for a long time. He's an older gentleman now, he's in his 80s. We've bought several pieces of property from him, so I know a lot about him, but they got a really good deal on this particular piece of property, so that's why they just, they bought it, they bought the whole thing and they're like, oh, we're going to buy it and we'll figure it out. So it, it's really buried how it sits right now without some sort of development, it, it's going to take some infrastructure to open it up, so.
Sure, would you guys, I mean, you could always put that, as, as you prepare your PD, you could always prepare that for commercial zoning or something else.
We would, we would talk to the school. I mean, we're, we're in talks with the school district and, and they've seen this plan, we're, we're working through those elements with them, but we could work with them to figure out how they would like that designated in the PD.
Great, great. And some of this is, is interesting because some of this is in the ETJ, which is now this gray thing that we're trying to figure all, we're all trying to figure out what ETJ is. This would bring, I imagine this would bring it into the city limits.
I believe all of this property is in the city limits already.
Oh, so 4M, okay, it's all in the city limits, okay. None of it, none of it's in the ETJ.
No, sir, I don't, not, not from the maps that I've seen, I think it's all in the city limits.
Good, good job. Alright, good.
Okay, any other thoughts or discussions, questions about the project? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Beautiful presentation, thank you.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Okay, Ms. Vicki, next item, please.
Next will be Agenda Item 9, Mayor, Council and City Manager Reports.
Okay, Ms. Chin, we'll start with you.
I have absolutely nothing. Y'all have a good night.
Mr. Harper?
Same.
Mr. Kelly?
Special thanks to the finance staff and leadership that's been working on budget. We're getting close to the finish line and it's a ton of work that's about to be hopefully behind us, so special thanks and shout outs to everybody and also look forward to another Fate, what are we calling it, the Farmers and Artisans? Fate Station Market this weekend. It's a fun deal, look forward to seeing everybody out there.
Mr. Manaval?
I would say thank you to the staff also for all the finance work. I've sent a lot of questions, got lots of answers, I appreciate it. And I think that's it for tonight.
Okay, Mr. Hatley?
I'd like to thank the staff as well. Also like to thank DPS as always, I'm never going to not thank them. And I'd like to thank the reps from Children's Advocacy, Lonestar Casa, Boys and Girls Club and Women in Need for coming out and giving their presentations. I think it's, it's great to hear from them, I think they're all incredible.
Ms. Huffman?
I too thank everybody for the presentations tonight. It was very informative and also thank the finance staff and everybody for putting it, putting together the numbers for the budget. It's not done, but we're getting close. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. For my report, just of course, the Fate Station Farmers Market this Saturday, as well as reminder to everybody, we have our Young Entrepreneurs Opportunity for Celebrate Fate. My daughter has signed up, she will be active in that, so that's super exciting, but I think this is a real opportunity to make fate something special. So I hope everybody gets out there and, and encourages people that you know, young people you know, to get involved with this. So thank you. Mr. Kovač?
Yes, sir. Tomorrow night is the Parks Board, 6 o'clock, if you're interested in parks. And then just a reminder for the council, we'll be, we'll be back next Monday at, at 6 o'clock for the next budget workshop and public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Next will be Agenda Item 10, which is Executive Session. The City Council will recess into Executive Session Closed Meeting to discuss the following in accordance with Section 551.087, to discuss or deliberate regarding economic development negotiations. One, Chapter 380 Economic Development Incentive and Performance Agreement with Freet LLC regarding property located at 301 East Fate Main Place, Arcad Property ID 10558. In accordance with Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. One, Chapter 380 Economic Development Incentive and Performance Agreement with Freet regarding property located at 301 East Fate Main Place, Arcad Property ID 10558. And two, Texas Statewide Opioid Settlement. And C, in accordance with 551.074, to discuss or deliberate regarding personnel matters. One, City Manager.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Thank you.
We will come back into regular session at 10:32. What is our next item on the agenda, please?
No action will be taken on items discussed in executive session, so item 12 is adjournment.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor of adjourned. Okay, it passes six with one abstention. Good night, everyone.
Okay, let me look.